Good evening. Good evening, good morning. Let's try morning. I'm already thinking ahead. Oh, a long day ahead of us. Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, May 27, 2008 Budget Study Session. It is about 8:45 a.m. Mr. City Clerk, could we call the roll?
Councilmembers Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Mayor Drayman.
Here. Well, all eyes seem to be turning to the right-hand side of the dais, from this side of the dais anyway. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. As we say, this is a Monday that starts on Tuesday, so we're all a little sleep deprived, I think, this morning, starting so soon. But we have an important topic for you to take up, and that is your first look at a plan for balancing our general fund budget for the upcoming year. Some preparatory comments, then I'll turn to our budget team to take you through the PowerPoint slides and the recommendations for you. I think this is a budget plan that must be fair because nobody likes it. Certainly, none of your operating department managers likes the plan that has been proposed here to you. We've started this year with seeing on the horizon a significant gap in our general fund budget. With that, your executives, the budget team, and I have spent two very long days looking at ways for adjusting the budget, both in terms of costs, but also looking at revenues, looking at transfers, looking at ways that we can close a gap while maintaining as best we can services. And frankly, I think a relatively high level of services this community has come to expect. We'll see impacts on the cost of providing those services, many of which, frankly, are very difficult to control. Things like utilities and insurance and fuel costs that we all experience personally at home are rising at a clip much greater than the general consumer price index. Here in the city, they have a profound impact on the cost of doing business because of our reliance on vehicles, the many facilities that we operate. Costs continue to rise, and yet we don't see revenues rising at the same rate, in large part because so much of our base is impacted by the economy, sales tax revenues, to some extent, property taxes. And we have known for many, many years that we have a bit of a structural problem in our budget, in that, like most cities, the revenues generally don't keep pace with inflation. So we have put together a plan and recommended strategies for you that adjust a number of areas. The most important, from your standpoint, from a community standpoint, is reductions in programs in order to reduce costs and expenditures to bring the budget in line. That's not the entire solution, but that is certainly the lion's share of the roughly $10 million that we went looking for to balance the general fund budget. This year is a bit of a reprioritization, I'll call it deconstruction. In order to give you the capacity to make decisions about programs, you need to have some room in which to operate. It's difficult to ask you to set priorities when you're cutting something and there isn't a single program or service that doesn't have a constituency attached to it, and as a result, from somebody's perspective, very important. So we have gone beyond just the roughly $10 million that was needed to close the gap in order to give you some capacity, in this case, about $2 million so far, in order to make decisions about what you want this budget plan to be for the upcoming year. Some very difficult decisions for you and for us, and you'll see as we walk through very briefly each department and the program and cost reductions that are included, that every program has a constituency, as I say, and somebody will feel the impact from the reductions. Having said that, I want to note that the executive team and their support staff and the budget team, Bill Fox, Ron Allers, Michelle Flynn, and Michael, have done a yeoman's job, working even over this weekend, to prepare the presentation and pull numbers together. It continues to be a work in progress. We are continuing to look at the expenditure side of the budget in particular, because as you'll see from the general numbers we'll present, we're seeing increases in the upcoming year, that we're still trying to pin down just what dynamics is going on, if there are ways to reduce costs even further and not have as big an impact on programs. So this continues to be a work in progress. This is your first opportunity to give us feedback, and we're anticipating that you will not embrace this plan lock, stock, and barrel, and that you'll likely give us direction for which we'll go back and do some more work, and then bring you back a second iteration at your next study session. With that, Mr. Mayor, if I can, let me turn to Bill Fox for the introduction.
I just want to make clear that when you're referring to our budget team, that we spent, this city spent no money on uniforms for the budget.
Till there's no uniforms, no badges.
All right.
Bill?
Thank you very much. I'd like to first start out and say that over the weekend, we did put in a lot of extra effort to put this together for you, so we hope that it's something that will be a good starting point for everybody, but we do recognize that more work needs to be To give you kind of an overview, we've helped several different topics, the first of which was a general fund overview, which will take you where we are and where we're going. We have several different strategies that we're going to be talking about. We're going to be going over the different types of adjustments, both revenue expense as well as citywide adjustments, changes to the transfers, both going in and out, and then we're going to talk about some items that are potential additional revenues, as well as other expenses that we would like to get some direction from council on. Also, general feedback from council, and then we'll go through our current calendar that we've put together. First off, we shared with you our forecast last time, indicating where we expect to be at the end of the year, and as you can see, our total ending fund balance is going to be $51.4 million is what we are forecasting as of the end of this year. We also put together at the last session an initial forecast of where we had initially anticipated, and as Mr. Starbird indicated, there's a $9.9 million gap that we need to address. Our revised forecast is the strategies that we put today in place to share with you, to come up with what we think is a good first step, and we've come up with a $2 million, what I call capacity, from which we can work from and make some changes to the existing Our proposed strategies have several different elements to it. The first is revenue adjustments. We're going to share with you today 10 different revenue adjustments that we've come up with, nine of which are increases to operating revenue. Secondly, we have department reduction strategies, and the reduction strategies we put into place are a 5% level. When you take a look at it in totality, some are slightly more, and there are some that are less, but in total, it's 5%, and that's coming from each of the 14 departments. Each of the 14 departments will be speaking today, and we're doing it in alphabetical order, so, starting with administrative services, on down in that order. We've also come up with three citywide reduction strategies across all the departments, which we'll share with you. We've looked at the transfers in and transfers out of the general fund, and there's five different strategies we're going to share with you today on transfers in, and on transfers out of the general fund, there's four that we'll be sharing with you. Also, as kind of Mr. Starbird had indicated, we have a work in process. We're still looking at vacant positions to make a determination on what additional capacity that we can generate. But as you can see right now, we're working with a $2 million programming capacity at this point. Additionally, we've done some strategy sessions, and in that, we've come up with some potential additional revenue sources. Nothing's been firmed up or finalized at this point, many of which will take council action to make a determination if we're going to go in that direction, and that range is from $4,000 to $700,000. And then we also have some additional expense items that we would like council's direction on, and that range is between $1 and $3 million. With that, I would like to have Mr. Allers come up, and he's going to first share with you the different items relative to the revenue strategies.
So, good question, Councilmember Najarian, just asked before you started, Ron. What we'll do is what we did before, we'll go department by department, and then we'll take questions from the council rather than wait till the end. That's all right.
How about a question on that last round?
Sure.
Okay, and I'll be brief. Bill, sorry, I called you Bruce while we were having coffee, so my mind was a little bit off. Question on the further reduction of select vacant positions to be determined, and you said there's a $2 million programming capacity. If we were to fill positions, is that going to result in a net expense to us, or would it, if we, you know, which way are we budgeting right now? Let's say we've got 95% capacity of employees filled. If we go to 100%, is that going to be additional? Or if we stay at the 95%, is that going to result in a savings? How are we looking at that, half full or half empty?
Well, let me try, let me try to address that. The $2 million programming capacity takes into account the way the positions have been developed at this point. So, for example, if you want to add additional police officers, then that would reduce that programming capacity.
Additional.
Additional.
So, let's not talk police, let's talk...
I'm just giving that as an example.
Right.
Any particular position that, but...
Let's say clerical line number 101.
That's right.
We're five short. If we were to fill those, this would not result in an additional expense currently budgeted.
If you add additional people, then what it'll do is it'll reduce that programming capacity.
When we say add additional, let's say that there's some attrition and jobs are unfilled. If we fill those jobs, is that going to eat into our programming capacity, or above and beyond the initial...
Let me touch on that. The budget reflects all authorized positions, whether filled or not. If they're authorized to be filled, then the budget is an anticipation that that money will be spent. What we've proposed here is, in these strategies, you have a number of positions being eliminated. In fact, I think there's a total of, how many, total positions being eliminated through these various reductions, 48 positions. Some of those are filled, and some of those are currently vacant, but they're all authorized and as a result, budgeted. And that takes me to a piece that we're continuing to look at. If you can go back to slide three. We're continuing to look at the change from the '07-'08 budget. Here you have the forecast actual, but the '07-'08 budget expense was about $162 million. We're continuing to evaluate how it is that the '08-'09 forecast, which is a rollover budget, maintain existing positions, no increase programs, what's driving the $174 million, a roughly $12 million increase in that budget. And we're also looking at the number of vacant positions, authorized but vacant, of which in the general fund, the neighborhood of about 100 positions, thereabouts. Some of those have been vacant for quite a considerable length of time. They may not be ones that are proposed for being reduced by the various departments, but we're looking at those to ask ourselves, if they've been vacant for a year, or two, or three, where is the money being used, and why do we continue to carry that position? Carrying all of the positions and budgeting for all the positions, whether filled or not, is in large part what gives rise to our generally experiencing a considerable savings at the end of each year. If you look at the general fund savings for the past 10 years, it's only been, I think, two years out of the past 15 or so where we have not had considerable savings at the end of the year. And that's because we budget for all of the positions that are authorized, but in the course of the year, may have as many as 100 in the general fund that go unfilled at any one time. As a result, you have considerable savings. We built into the budget in past years some anticipation of that savings, the general fund. I think we budget now $2 million each year, anticipating we'll have at least $2 million in savings, and yet we still exceed that in most years. The CIP, you'll recall this last year, we anticipated $1.5 million more in savings, so there we've taken up $3.5 million we expect to have in savings each year. But as noted, in this year, we still had some considerable savings at the end of the year. So we're continuing to evaluate, how can we address the fact that we budget for all authorized positions, but many at any one point in time go unfilled over the course of the year? And can we capture that savings somehow, so that we're not, so that we're not budgeting a figure and then making reductions in programs based on that, and then still finding ourselves with savings at the end of the year, that maybe those, some of those cuts weren't necessary?
Thank you.
All right, let's move back to Mr. Allers.
Okay. I'd like to direct your attention to slide number five, and here's some adjustments that we have made to our general fund initial forecast that we did a few months ago. One is we increased these certain revenue line items. I don't necessarily need to speak to all of them, but let me speak to a few of them. One is our property tax current. Property taxes actually lag the economy anywhere from 18 to 24 to 30 months, as we are still experiencing, one, sales of real estate, and you also have to remember that the assessment happened as of January 1, 2008, and that's the revenue that we receive in '08, '09. So it lags the economy by a considerable amount. We originally anticipated a 4% increase in our property tax revenue, and this basically increases it to 5% by this adjustment. Last week, I received a memo from Los Angeles County Assistant's Office, and countywide, LA County is increasing their roll by 6%, positive 6%. And that just shows that we're still in that positive phase of the real estate assessment. E-RAF for VLF, that just falls in line with the property tax assessment increasing. UUT, utility users' tax, we're also showing an increase. This is our increase based on what we're seeing in our utilities. For example, natural gas are, if you've looked at your unit price for your natural gas bills that comes out every month, the unit price is now over a dollar versus it was well below 50 cents a year ago. And that's just taking into account natural gas prices that has gone the way of oil and gasoline and so forth. Also, this reflects the increase in our own water utility that we made adjustments to and so forth. So that's an additional $275,000. The rest are all minor, but these are specific line-ons, be it them fines, or royalties, or reimbursements. Landfield gas royalties, this is our landfill sale, landfill gas sale from Shoal Canyon to our power plant. And again, this actually follows the NYMEX and the natural gas futures market, and then some other minor adjustments. When we come down to it, we've increased our revenues $1.2 million, as you see on the bottom line on the screen, from our initial forecast, so that we're now at a little less than $166 million for next year. What's not in here is we continue to watch sales tax. Sales tax may be bottoming out, but it's always too, you know, when you get that one month where it's a little bit, one quarter that's a little bit of an uptick from the prior year, you can't call it a trend yet, you have to wait for it. So, sales tax, we had reduced in our initial budget, and we're just keeping it as is, we're not increasing it, and we're not reducing it until we get another quarter or two to see if there's a turnaround. And with that, we can move on to the next slide. The next slide, as Mr. Starbird mentioned previously, we...
Ron, you got a question? Hold on.
Yeah, what is the inter-fund?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Quintero. Inter-fund revenue is, shows a reduction of $275,000, I shouldn't not have overlooked that.
$285,000.
$285,000, and what that is, we have a number of departments that service the entire city. For example, finance, we cut all the paychecks for the entire city, and we charge all the non-general fund for that service, the same way with management services, same way with Scott Howard and the city attorney's office and so forth. Since we provide services to the entire city, we actually charge them a fee, so electric, water, transit, a number of the other funds receive this charge. Because we're reducing our budgets, management services, finance, city attorney, and all of us overhead departments, we are now programming that in as less revenue as well. All it is is a percentage charge based on budget. So since we're reducing all of our budgets, we have to reduce the inter-fund revenue as well. So while we're reducing the operating department, the overhead departments by millions of dollars, that effect is a reduction in inter-fund of $285,000, that bringing in revenue.
Excuse me, gentlemen, I don't want to get into questions now. I want to let Ron finish, and then, if you could, there'll be a time for each of you to have your questions, if you don't mind.
Slide six shows a summary of each one of the operating departments within the general fund. You'll notice that Glendale Water and Power is not here since they are not general fund at all, but you have the whole city basically here, the entire city. And as Mr. Starbird mentioned before, we asked the departments to present a 5% and a 7.5 and a 10% reduction, and what we have here is the 5% cut of the reduction for each one of the operating departments within the general fund. So you can see the initial budget that was submitted, the initial forecast, which totaled up to a little over $164 million. This is less the transfers. There's no transfers on this slide, we'll get to that in about 25 slides. The reductions that you see here of $8 million, and then are revised of $155 million for roughly a 5% reduction for each one of the departments, and you can see, some are a little bit over than 5%, some are a little bit under than 5%, but we asked the departments to come back with their program cuts and what they could eliminate, and what the impact would be on each one of those eliminations, and this is what the executive team has come up with to present to the city council for each one of the operating departments. The next series of 16 slides will actually go through each one of these departments one by one, and you will hear that executive or their assistant talk about specifically what their cuts are and how it impacts their department and the services that they provide. And with that, we can start off with admin services, and I'll just keep going.
Okay, let me stop you before we start in on our program of departments. Let's go to Mr. Yusefian.
Question on slide five. You are adding $150,000 to the property taxes. I understand you're saying that we're lagging behind, but when it comes down next year, when the lag catches up with us, aren't we going to be looking at a much bigger drop? Then we will have the same challenge next year, wouldn't we? Because we are actually adding $150,000, which is not that much, but the issue is the concept. Conceptually, you're adding, which is going to put you in a different location. When it drops, you're going to have the addition plus the drop, so you're going to drop even further, so you will have a bigger challenge next year.
Let's talk about general fund property tax. General fund property tax, one, does not include, in reality, the central business district, because that property tax was frozen as of 1972.
Right.
So we're really talking about...
Houses.
Houses, and residential stock in the entire city.
Right.
We have a little under 10%, believe it or not, of our housing stock is pre-1978, which is Prop 13. The rest of our housing stock, while we've had sales in the last three to four years, if you think about how many tens of thousands of homes we've had, it doesn't impact it that greatly. For example, in the last five years, while some small cities that have had tremendous growth and huge tract homes being built, we were, while we were going up 6% one year and 8% the next and so forth, other cities were going up by 15%, 20%. We don't have a huge increase in our housing stock. Consequently, we have a lot of assessed value that is actually pre-2000 assessed value. So while some houses will turn around, and they'll actually have a decrease in assessed value, we have the Prop 13 guaranteed 2% cost of living adjustment every year for a huge amount of our housing stock. And then you have the assessed value, where housing are still being sold, some of these housing, some of the housing is assessed value from, you know, pre-1978 or pre-2000, so we're still seeing an uptick in the assessed value of it. So it's a small population that is actually going to show a decrease in the assessed value.
The other characteristic of benefits is that 60% of our housing is multifamily, and rents aren't going down. Those properties are maintaining their values because they're rental properties. The most volatile component of our property base are the large commercial buildings where they can go in for an assessment and affect their value 20, 30, 40, $50 million. That's all in the redevelopment project area, so the exposure isn't for the general fund.
All right, let's move ahead to administrative services.
Okay.
Oh, Mr. Yusefian, I'm sorry.
On slide six, it says, "Community development less self-sustaining." What does that mean?
I'll let Madeline and Sam answer that, but basically, they have certain programs where they bring in revenue and the expenses match it.
So that's not included in that money?
Right, it's not in, those programs are outside of this number that you see on the screen.
Got it. All right, thank you.
Let's move forward.
Okay. On slide seven, you'll notice that we'll start off with our first department, which is administrative services. Administrative services consists of finance, purchasing, and graphics. We are in what I'll call an overhead department. We service the entire city. We issue paychecks, we cut accounts payable checks for Glendale Water and Power, as well as the general fund, as well as community development and transit for the entire city. So what we have here is our proposed cuts. We have one elimination of an admin analyst, which is currently vacant in our department. That saves us $86,000. The impact there of that position is, does a lot of administrative work, for example, insurances. As we issue purchase orders and contracts, we have this person validate that the insurance is good, it's in force, that it's also, that it's also being maintained, because sometimes the insurance policy will lapse, and maybe the contract hasn't finished, or the purchase order hasn't finished, so we have to follow up with the vendor and get the new insurance. So that's one area of this admin analyst work that he or she would do, since it's currently vacant. The rest are all reductions to get us up to the 5% level, hourly wages of $10,000. The impact there is that this person actually does all of our filing. We issue 600 AP checks every week. We have dozens of purchase orders that we issue every week, so this is all the filing that goes into the cabinets, gets pulled out of the cabinets when people need to look at it and so forth. So it's all the filing within finance, which is, as you can imagine, we have hundreds of thousands of documents. Our budget summary booklet, savings of $15,000, this is the nice glossy booklet, that's about 50 pages, that we do pass out in the community, and so with that, we're actually proposing to either eliminate the budget summary booklet, or to reduce it drastically and not have it be such high glossy and pictures and so forth. The next three are PeopleSoft. To remind council, we have two PeopleSoft programs. One is our payroll system, the other is our financial system. We've been up on payroll since 1993, we've been up on financial since 1999. So this is a reduction out of the finance budget, for one, for consulting services of $60,000. This is if we needed to implement a new part of the PeopleSoft program, or we had some issues that we couldn't deal with, the complexity of the bug, or the error, whatever we were experiencing was too difficult for us, then we would go to either an outside consultant, or we would actually go to PeopleSoft directly and ask for that help. We have a great IT staff, they have come up to speed tremendously on PeopleSoft, so that we are not experiencing those needs anymore like we once did years ago, so the $60,000 we can cut. The PeopleSoft payroll annual maintenance and financial annual maintenance, this we're pulling out of the general fund, we're going to have an internal service fund pay for these items, so this actually reduces our consulting services and so forth that is available there, so that we are really going to be maintaining the system completely by ourselves, using our own IT staff. And once again, our IT staff has, is up to, is up to that challenge. They have a skill set that is greatly beyond what we started off with years ago, and they are able to address all our errors and our problems that we currently experience. The last item is just temporary clerical services, just a small reduction. This is when we need it. It's a purchase order for if we have vacancies, or we have a crunch at year-end or beginning of the year, that we'll go out for temporary clerical services and have them come in for a month or so to help us out. So our reduction is $248,000 for administrative services, and with that, I can answer any questions from the council.
All right, let me take questions from my colleagues, let's try to keep them brief, we have a long way to go. Mr. Yusefian.
I have no problem with anything, with the exception of the budget summary booklet. You said you could do it for less if we did not have all the pictures and it wasn't glossy, was recycled paper or whatever. I think it's important for us to have that, because when we go to schools and talk to kids, or talk to the community, it's very easy, we hand it out, self-explanatory, the color chart shows people where the money comes, where it goes, it's very helpful. How much would you save if you didn't do glossy and you didn't do all, you know, you didn't have pictures of every department head or whatever in there, you just had more of... You just had more verbs and less pictures?
I'd have to get back to my graphics department on that.
Can you do like what, $10,000?
We could probably, we could probably save $5,000, maybe more, if we didn't do all the glossy and the high-end paper. If we did a cheaper paper, maybe not go to the newspaper size, but still a decent quality paper and get away with a lot of the pictures, but still left the graphs and so forth. The big thing is the color. We could reduce the amount of colors and we can save quite a few thousand dollars. So if we went to more of a black and white format versus the color, then that is where you save the money.
The pie charts are very...
Right.
It's important for the pie charts at least to be in color, but everything else can be in...
Black and white.
Black and white.
Right, right. So I can get back to you on that, but we can...
I'm just chuckling because it's beginning to sound a lot like Wheel of Fortune, whether verbs cost more than nouns or...
I like to buy a vowel, mayor.
Ron, how many of those are left undistributed?
A lot.
A lot.
A lot.
Because I'm thinking we could probably...
There is a lot.
Print as much.
Packing material and...
Or not print as many.
Where's the break point?
You know, we're looking at changing the way and really adapting more to the way people are used to accessing information. We can put the same information on our website, for example. If people want a printed copy, they can make a copy right off the website, doing it as an insert in the local newspaper where it reaches everybody who subscribes. So you can present the same information, the pie charts and everything, not as glossy, not as pretty, but still could give you considerable handouts for groups. And we think we can do that for considerably less than what we're currently spending. Yasma's been managing the effort, and she thinks there's a number of ways to reduce the cost.
All right, but we will keep that in mind. I don't want to deprive children this Christmas of ripping open, their first Christmas, ripping open that wrapping paper and getting their first budget summary report. That's all right, Ron. I had disappointment from them, so... All right, are there any other questions regarding the administrative services component? Okay, thank you so much, Ron.
Next is city attorney, Mr. Scott Howard.
Got my slide up. Mr. Mayor, members of council, our budget is 93% salaries and 7% maintenance and operations. So when you begin to cut the city attorney's budget by anything over a few percent, you begin to potentially look at actual positions. Fortunately, we did have a vacant position when we lost a support staffer to another city. We kept that position open to determine whether or not there was an actual need to refill that position. We have now determined that we can continue functioning appropriately and handle our workload in a manner to which you and other departments have been, become accustomed without that position. So we have indicated that we will eliminate that position. As a result, there's a, that's where the significant reduction comes into play of $65,000. The rest of it is maintenance and operation contractual services account. We are able to eliminate that. That account was kept open to pay for our librarian, who was a part-time librarian, hourly. We eliminated that contractual, that contractual program a couple of years ago. So we no longer need that fund. We kept it open also to pay for the maintenance of our copy machine, which we now understand is being paid by another department through a lease program. So we're able to eliminate that. Office supplies, training, travel accounts, we're reducing that by a like percentage. Just had those increased over a couple of years ago to somewhat match inflation. We hadn't had an increase for about almost 10 years, and we're now scaling that back to reach close to 5%.
Do we have questions? We're not cutting down on the percentage of accurate analyses of legal matters?
It was something we discussed, but quickly...
Every other one or...
No, sir.
Okay.
Quality will not suffer.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on to the city clerk's office.
In order to reach our 5% threshold for the cuts, we had a customer service representative position, which is our front desk basically person, the first person you see when you come into the office. That person actually transferred to another department. We had a vacancy, and it was our decision along with city managers and consultation to vacate that position, eliminate it. That would give us savings of $54,000. Also, when I started in the city clerk's office, we had a copier that was very antiquated. The cost of maintenance as well as toner and other expenses was costing more than a new lease would, so we have now a new copier, a copier that does more, actually also eliminates a lot of the work that we would send over to graphics that would be charged. And that is providing us a savings of anywhere between $200 to $400 a month. So that's a $4,000, brings us to $58,000, 5.1% percentage reduction. It's very simple. Again, just like city attorney's office, ours is mostly MNO, just salaries and other things that we do.
Questions? Councilmember Yusefian.
Does, your budget does not include the election?
We actually decided, the city manager, and we decided to take that out of this...
Right. And where would that come?
It comes out of his budget, but we didn't include it in the total budget number for calculating his 5%.
I understand.
Every other year, he budgets...
But it has to be a part of the total budget, right?
Right, right, it is.
Because we have an election coming up.
That's right.
2009, so...
But we didn't touch it.
Would that be in the 2009 budget or would it be in this year?
No, it'll be in the 2008, '09 budget.
Okay.
Because we have an election in April of '09.
And do we know what that amount is?
What did Ron last time already?
And last time it was a little over $300,000, it was about $330,000.
Because we talked about printing the absentees, have them send out with all the addresses and everything also. Just want to make sure you got that.
Okay.
We did.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Socky. Sorry, it was a yawn, I'm so sensitive right now.
Understood.
Councilmember yawned, I thought it was going to be a question. Councilmember opens his mouth, I'm, you know, okay. All right, let's move on to the city treasurer. You're not Ron Baruchy, I assume? He's no longer in Las Vegas, I assume?
No.
Okay, all right.
Although he is out of town on the weekend, and he's asked me to come up here, and he has prepared a statement.
Can you tell us who you are?
Yes, thank you. Guy Murray, I'm the deputy city treasurer. The treasurer's office is the smallest department with the smallest budget in the city. Total budget dollars of $562,000, and $496,000 of that is in salaries for a staff of five. Office operations primarily cashiering, banking-related, require minimum staff of five. And the treasurer's office is fully staffed at five and has been for the last nine years. It manages no programs and has no projects, no vacancies, no overtime, no hourly dollars to adjust. Maintenance and operations total $66,000, of which 47 are fixed, which means necessary expenses such as Bloomberg, insurance, bonding, and city services. There are no dollars to shave. The remainder of that $19,000 is the total of variable costs such as training, education supplies, equipment, repair, et cetera, for the office. The treasurer has carved out $1,500 from this category. The office has been managed in minimal dollar environment for a number of years. The treasurer feels strongly that this $1,500 be the limit of expense cuts for the office, particularly with his successor coming into the office early next calendar year. Any more dollar cuts would jeopardize training and seminar dollars that should be available for the incoming treasurer to decide.
And when it says office supplies, $1,500, it's mostly what, paper clips, $1,500? What are we talking about?
Yes, copies for reports, yes, just anything that we use to mainly operate, deposit services. So it's mainly just general office supplies.
Okay, questions? Councilmember Najari.
Generally, I think the thing that sticks out is that it's only a 0.3% reduction. Are any of the five staff near the age of retirement?
We have some, yes, yes. But no indication there that they're going to retire any time soon.
What would happen with a full, fully staffed force of five, but if there were four, would it be possible to spread the duties of the fifth staffer amongst the existing four?
Yes, but it'll be, it'll be quite a stretch because, I mean, we're talking, right now there's actually three, not including myself in the treasurer. There's three that's support staff.
Obviously, you're just filling in. I don't want to give you all the tough questions today, but that's something I'd like to perhaps look at and get a better understanding as to the staffing needs and the duties of each of those three staff with the deputy and the full treasurer, so...
Yeah, Mr. Starbird.
Yes, I might add that Mr. Baruchy took considerable heat from his colleagues as we went through the budget presentations, as you can imagine. And frankly, I personally took some heat for not seeming to hold his feet to the fire to produce his 5%. I did note to the staff and will to you that in doing an audit of the treasurer's office, internal audit, did an audit of the treasurer's office and procedures, out of that came some views by the internal audit staff that there could be some areas for improving workflow which could reduce the amount of, not difficulty is they have five full-time people, so you eliminate a position, you've eliminated 20% of their, roughly 20% of their budget. So there are opportunities, internal audit believes, for improving workflow in a way that you could reduce the total amount of staff time necessary to handle all of it. I committed to the execs and indicated to Mr. Baruchy that I'd like to have internal audit bring back that information for both the treasurer and myself to look at those workflow opportunities where workflow either could be adjusted in the treasurer's office or possibly some of the workflow shifted to the finance department so we could get better scales of economy and the utilization of staff and make some further reductions in his budget. So that was kind of a phase two to his. Ron needed to be engaged in that, internal audit needed to be engaged. So we weren't able to produce a complete number here, but I committed to the execs and told Ron that he needed to be committed to looking at that further in hopes of finding more economies.
Excuse me, councilmember Yusefian.
Other question. Your, the number of staffs that were working in the treasurer's office, with the exception of the treasurer, is four people. That's you and three other people. For how long, I don't know how long you worked for the city of Glendale, for, based on your memory, what, that number, how long ago was only three, for example? Or has it always been four?
It's always been four.
For how long? 10 years, 15 years, 20 years?
You know, I've been with the city 20 years, almost 20 years.
And the treasurer's office?
The treasurer's office, five years. And in the five years that I've been there, it's been four, not including the city treasurer. Prior to that, it's been four, that I can recall.
Now, Ron, Ron always goes back 60 or 70 years, so he can probably...
Right. Thank you, Mr. Starbird. Back in 1996, we actually increased the city treasurer's staff by one to the current level of five.
That was when Betty Evans was still there.
Betty Evans was still here as the city treasurer, and we increased her staffing by one.
So that was 12, 12 years ago.
96, okay, thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, for myself, I think the city treasurer is doing a good job. There's no overtime, which is, which is the word that I like to hear. I think he's cutting costs $1,500, but his budget is the small amount. So even, even if you do a better workflow, I don't think, unless city manager can't tell me otherwise, I don't think you're going to change that number. It's still going to have the same four people, just going to be a little bit more efficient.
Okay, Mr. Weaver.
What is your investment portfolio, the dollar amount approximately?
We ended April at $498 million.
Almost a half a billion dollars, right?
Yes.
Total of five people. I don't agree in the $1,500 cut. That's pennies. We ought to leave you alone because you have a big job to do with a small staff.
All right, anyone else? All right, thank you very much. Let's move on to community development and housing.
By the way, we indicated, Mr. Baruchy, if he'd just get us 20 more basis points, we'd leave him alone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the...
Thank you, it's a PowerPoint presentation.
City council.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We have two sections which are partially funded with general fund. We have neighborhood services. 30% of neighborhood services is funded with general fund, approximately a million dollars. And we have our youth employment programs. $170,000 of the youth employment programs is funded with general fund. So these reductions reflect both sections. The first reduction is the elimination of one position in neighborhood services. Neighborhood services is primarily staffing, and although we do have two vacant inspector positions at this time, they're both filled temporarily with hourly employees in order to keep up with the workload. So the proposal is to eliminate a position, but to eliminate one of the customer service representative or one of the filled positions because we don't feel like we can afford to eliminate additional inspectors. We eliminated two inspectors, I think it was two years ago, in the last budget reduction session. The remaining reduction, a little over $8,000 from the youth employment programs, those are maintenance and operations types of reductions which I think they can try and absorb in their self-sufficiency programs. So although the percentage is slightly over 5%, the reduction for neighborhood services is approximately $48,000, but it results in the elimination of one position.
Okay, I'd just like to ask you something or make a comment, Madeline. And this is a general comment, not just to you, obviously, it's just you having to be standing there. Let's not forget also in all of this process that it is a budget study session, and even though we're in a budget-cutting mode and mood, mode and mood, that's not the sole purpose of what we're doing here. And I, for one, am not only leery of cutting in the area of neighborhood services, I would like to see an increase in the area of neighborhood services, just as fire and police are sort of our first responders in the public safety arena. Our neighborhood services ends up being our first responders in the area of quality of life in this city. And I don't know about my colleagues, I'm going to guess, it's similar, probably 60 to 75% of the emails I get, the contacts I get from the public, the phone calls, the personal contacts, the questions at meetings, homeowner groups, and so on, are, end up being referred to Sam Engel and neighborhood services. This is anything from graffiti issues to whether that, you know, second floor that went up in the house behind you just last night has a permit to do that, or was it, you know, was the property built with permits, to investigating whether there's an occupied chicken coop, to whether it's, you know, the list just goes on and on and on to that Andy Gump portable toilet that's been parked in front of someone's house for that construction project for the last five years. It all ends up being referred to that department. And I've got to tell you, you know, and I don't mean this as a criticism, but the ability of that department to respond, I don't want to see that, not only don't see it damaged or decreased, I want to see the response time increased and the ability to respond increased. And so I just wanted to go on the record for that. I would like to find a way to, to, not only to increase the resources in terms of feet on the ground. Mr. City Manager.
I was going to say, Mr. Mayor, whether, whether here or maybe at the end after you're through all the departments, I gave Madeline and Sam a heads up, and they're prepared to talk about how additions to their staffing could impact the response times at a time that you're, you're willing to take it. So you'd have some sense of what you might need to add to have a certain impact on the level of response to code enforcement and neighborhood services inquiries.
All right, and Mr. Yusefian.
Same comments, that's the mayor said, to an extent. Let me ask you a question. Eliminate one position, this is a clerical position you said you were going, a customer so...
It would be...
What does it do? What does this person do?
Well, at this point, it would be a non-inspector type of position.
Okay.
Probably a support position.
How many inspectors we currently have that is funded through general fund, not CDBG? Okay, 1.3. And my understanding was talking to Sam is that you're obligated to use the inspectors that are... use the inspectors that are CDBG in the CDBG area. So, we have 1.3 for the rest of the city. And that becomes very difficult for some enforcements in the northern part of the town when it's not CDBG area, for example. So, your obligations are to CDBG area first, and if there's nothing there, then you can send them up there. I have the same concerns as the mayor does. I like to talk about somewhere down the line adding an inspector to the neighborhood services. The other thing that I had a question on just escaped my mind, oh, came back. We made, as a council, we made a commitment to add the thirty-five thousand dollars for graffiti removal from the programming out, and we said we will fund that through the general fund, and I don't see that in here. Is it included in here, in your budget?
This is from the CDBG presentation.
Okay, so it is included in that 1.2 million dollars. Okay, so it's fair. Thank you.
Okay, let me go to the city manager and then Mr. Quinter.
I'll defer to Mr. Quinter. I was going to suggest that we go through all the departments, we'll make a list of this, and come back and let Sam give you more input on how you can affect the response time and what positions it would take to do that. They did lose positions three years ago?
Three years ago, we lost two inspector positions.
So, they're well-prepared to give you a sense of what it would take to get back to some level of service delivery?
And, Mr. Mayor, if I might add, one of the issues, and I think you identified it, is the complexity of the issues. The issues are becoming so much more complex, so to keep up with the complexity, banquet halls, all of that, in addition to keeping the quality of life issues attended to in the community is challenging.
Okay, Mr. Quinter.
Today, we're talking about the general fund, but I think we need to spend time to analyze the entire department and the different funding sources and components. The CDBG monies in that budget, also the WIA money in that budget. I mean, I'd like to know exactly what's going on with the entire department. Are we going to get a chance to do that in June, or when is that going to take place? At the next session, or when do we actually?
Let's see if we can get you an answer.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the CDBG budget has already been before you. The housing budget is scheduled to come before you next week. The WIA budget is included in the city's budget. One of the challenges with the WIA budget is we don't have our final allocation yet, and the state has not yet come out with their draft plan. So, that will be coming, but it probably won't be coming until after the first of July because we don't have the final numbers yet.
Well, I'd still like to get a general feel for that WIA budget, regardless of whether we know exactly what the allocation is going to be or not, because I do have some questions about it. So, I'd like to see it fairly soon. And, you know, this idea of doing it at different times, I mean, that's the way it's been done, and I guess in a certain extent, to a certain extent, it has to be done, but at one point, we need to sit down and look at the entire department and all of the funding components and how they're all sort of interacting and working together. Otherwise, we literally are getting piecemeal information.
All right, Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, if you wish, we can certainly do that. We could append on a joint city council housing authority meeting when you take up the housing authority budget, then we can give you all the other pieces that go into the entire community development and housing budget, if you wish.
I would like to do that. I would like to do it especially at a time when the afternoon schedule isn't so heavy and complex that we can take some time with it.
Yeah. We'll look at the agenda when we're bringing you the housing budget. I forget offhand what that workload is, but if we could do it all at the same time, that would be the time to give you the whole picture, is when you take up the housing budget.
All right, okay. Other questions? All right, thank you very much. Let's move on to fire department. Good morning, Chief Skokitz.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. This was a tough process to go through, but I'll start off with our initial cuts.
Well, if I can, chief, how long have you been chief when we embarked on this effort?
Two weeks.
If that. I think it was more like three hours.
It's been a lot of learning, but it's been very challenging. We start off with the elimination of six firefighter positions, and the only way that we can, in the fire department, get to a 5 percent cut is by affecting the operations section of the fire department. And what does that mean? That means the responders out there in the community. The engines that we have targeted for a reduction are engine 23 in Chevy Chase Canyon and engine 29 in the Montrose area. So, what are the effects there? Well, that means those fire companies are going to have to change the operations on the way that they do business. We operate on efficiency and working with four personnel to solve problems in a very timely manner, whether it's a fire or a medical emergency. And that's going to really affect the company operations. Ancillary assignments, number of company inspections, vegetation management inspections, and a number of different things like that are going to be affected by this reduction strategy. But, you know, it should be noted that it's going to be challenging for the fire companies out there. We trained with four people, and this is a significant change in the operation. By eliminating those six positions, there will not be a need for the next recruit training academy, and that's where the three hundred ten thousand dollars comes from, right there.
Chief, Mr. Mayor, if I can?
Yes.
I think we need to emphasize that the first item on the list, which is the two engines, three shifts, essentially eliminating one firefighter, means essentially what we've come to call three-man, three firefighter engine companies for all three shifts at those two stations. You had a big presentation on four-man engine companies, three-man engine companies some time ago. So, this is really beginning to implement the three-man engine company scenario for those two stations in this program, and as a result, eliminating potentially six firefighter positions, right, chief?
Six firefighters.
And the savings from that. Now, we have a lot of vacancies, and so this flows into the reduction in the recruit academy, which the chief's about to get to, but I want to make particular note of that. Also, the implication of that could be, not saying it is, but could be, inasmuch as we're having our ISO rating reviewed again this year, currently going through it, this could be the item that drops us down to a class two. That probably only affects bragging rights because we have, for many, many years, much longer than I've been here, bragged about the fact that we are a class-one fire department and all that that implies. That could be impacted by that. We could become a class-two ISO department. Doesn't stop us from saying we are a first-class fire department, as LA City does, but technically speaking, this could drop us a level.
Before we break into questions, let's get through the report, and then we'll come back and we'll get all the questions. I'm sure there are many.
So, the recruit training academy, there won't be a need for that by reducing these positions. We currently have a vacant deputy fire chief's position, and we're going to reduce that down to a battalion chief's position. We're going to reallocate the duties in the fire department. And so, our existing structure is we have two deputy fire chiefs. One is admin and one is operations. By eliminating the admin deputy fire chief, that means that I will assume a number of the duties with direct reports as it relates to the support side. Support for DuGo Fire Communications EMS, different things like that, where we had a deputy on the admin side to handle those duties. So, that'll be the strategy there. As we move down the list, eliminate a fire captain in our public education slash PIO section, and that we will be combining, well, I'm sorry, that is actually a misprint. That should be elimination of a firefighter, where it says 118,000. That's elimination of a firefighter out of our public education section. We have a firefighter assigned to work with our public education coordinator, whose primary responsibilities are the Hoover High Public Safety Academy, the safety trailer, the junior fire program, assisting with the CERT program, the community emergency response team, and a number of different duties like that. We're going to attack some of those issues by hiring hourly retired firefighters to assume some of those duties in the CERT program, the Hoover High Public Safety Academy, which will be funded, that position will then be funded out of the ROP program, and also bringing in another retired firefighter to assist with the CERT program. And that'll cover a number of those duties, and those individuals will work with our public education coordinator. Be a challenge to get off the ground, but we're already moving towards that plan. Elimination of a fire captain, our support fire captain. We have one fire captain who's responsible for all the support facilities in the fire department. We have 11 facilities, nine fire stations, along with our environmental management center and our training center. We have over 90 vehicles in the fire department. We have a number of special projects that take place in the fire department, and it takes a person to prioritize these duties and the things that need to be done with maintenance, with repairs, with refrigerators in station, you name it, when things are happening. And this is an elimination of that position. We're going to redistribute some of those duties, which means that some of the things will be lost in the shuffle to our storekeeper for ordering supplies. We're going to ask our shop supervisor to assist with some of the vehicle maintenance, and, you know, we're going to try to pick it up where we can, but there's going to be a significant loss of support there on that side. Elimination of our fire captain in emergency services, that's our EOC coordinator. What we're going to do is we're going to combine our emergency services coordinator and our PIO slash public education captain's position, which means that they're going to have to do prioritization pretty much daily to figure out the things that need to be accomplished. When there's a significant incident, obviously, it may be a need for that person to go out to the field and assume the PIO duties. If there's a disaster in town, there's going to be a need for them to open up the EOC. A lot of things go along with that, supervising the public education department, recruitment, a lot of different things there, training our disaster coordinators in the city. There's just a number of different things that go along with combining those positions, and there's going to be a number of things lost there. Elimination of our male services specialist. This has been a position that's been vacant in the fire department for some time now. We've been handling those duties by using a GYA youth employee to assume our male services duties, along with supplementing it with our fire cadet program. So, we feel comfortable with that position right there. For about the last year, one of our battalion chiefs has been assigned to the ISIS project, and we've got a commitment for them to fund approximately half of his salary, and that means half of his time. So, we're short a battalion chief there, and his other half time will be spent supervising the Verdugo Dispatch Center. We got some key objectives that we're pushing towards there, so half of his salary will be funded there, so we'll realize that savings. And then the elimination of support overtime. We're going to keep evaluating that on a daily basis, and if there's a training class that's going on and it's local and we can have an opportunity not to hire back for that person because that person is local, then we'll not hire back for that person, and that's how we'll get to that $30,000 numbers. But, it'll be evaluating it on a daily basis. But, if I can come back to the first point that we opened the discussion with, just want to let you know that this will be, you know, a significant change in the way we do business. And, you know, all of our responses, whether it's a fire or a medical response, really operate on efficiency and time, and that's what solves problems, by having enough resources to throw at the problem. So, I just want to let you know that this is a significant change for us to put up here today. Yes?
Thank you. Usually, people are asking me to shut off the mic, not turn it on, but that's all right. To remind my colleagues that we do have an afternoon session scheduled to get into some of this in a little more detail. So, I don't want to go too far afield today, but just as a couple of questions, since the point is raised about class-one versus class-two and what, you know, what that relates to. I keep hearing things, so I want you to just throw a couple of them out. I keep hearing that Arcadia, the city of Arcadia, for example, is a class-one fire department with three men versus four men, and that Pasadena is not a class-one or class-two, and that they have a four man. Can you address that one for me?
Well, the first question, I don't know what Arcadia's ratings are or Pasadena, but I will find out for you and let you know this afternoon. I know it was either Arcadia or Monrovia just went through the ISO survey, and I know that because one of the areas that they evaluate is dispatching, and we dispatch for both of those agencies, so I'll be able to...
Should be able to find out.
I'll find that.
Yeah, I mean, the implication, obviously, here with those comments made is that whether it's three or four men, in certain cases, in and of itself, obviously, is not the determination of how those classifications are made, and we know that because you've told us, a great, for example, 40 percent of it has to do with water supply.
Right, and it's having enough staffing on scene of an incident in a timely manner. That's what a big part of that is based on, having enough resources responding and getting on scene in a timely manner to start to solve the problem.
Okay, another thing that's on here, when you talk about the fire academies, you talk about elimination, where is it, cancel recruit academy. We're not talking about canceling sending recruits to recruit academies, we're talking about not holding our own, correct, and sending to the existing ones and other...
That is correct. Currently, we have a fire academy going, and we had planned a second fire academy in the fall, and that's canceling that recruit training.
So, where will they go? They'll go to...
They'll just remain on the list. They're on the current eligible list right now for hiring.
Okay, but there are other recruit academies that they could attend, correct? Other than our own?
If they're on list for Pasadena or Burbank fire departments, then they may call them and give them an opportunity for employment there. This is our Glendale or Verdugo recruit academy that we put all of our new firefighters through.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I can, this implies that we probably wouldn't need this recruit academy because we'd have, we'd have six full-time positions that would fill the existing vacancies.
Okay, and then, there's been some comments related to drivers. What is that all about, chief?
The staff assistance position. That's the battalion chief's staff assistant. What that position is, it's really more than a driver. Each of our...
I suspect so, that's why I'm asking.
Each of our battalion chiefs are tasked with supervising 12 fire companies on a daily basis, and that's 60 personnel. And that's for organizing the day, that's for making sure all the hiring that's done, all the activities are taking place, and just all the things that take place, as well as the most significant role. If there's a significant incident here in the community, that staff assistant becomes the resource management personnel for that line battalion chief, so that battalion chief can manage the incident without worrying about who's where and who's coming in. The staff assistant takes that role up and manages those resources, so the battalion chief can focus on solving the problem. And that becomes the most significant issue of solving the problem. And some cities don't have staff assistants, and they are challenged to, when they have significant emergencies in their town. And I will give you an example. When we had the church fire here in Glendale, I was the line operations battalion chief that day, that night, actually. And when that fire took place, my focus was on solving the problem, making sure everyone was out the church, making sure our firefighters were safe, and making sure we got that fire out. The staff assistant who I had working with me that night took the role of all the resources coming in, putting them on a clean sheet for me or on the back of the suburban, so I can start to place people in key places to solve the problem. So, it's not just a driver, it's you're managing, it's assisting the battalion chief with managing the daily operations of the fire department. Otherwise, it would be a 60-to-1 ratio for that one line battalion chief. Most fire departments don't have that ratio in our surrounding areas. Burbank doesn't have a staff assistant, but they have six fire stations. We have nine. We have 12 fire companies.
Right.
LA City has staff assistants, and they have a much smaller ratio, six, five to seven fire stations to manage.
I understand why I'm asking the question.
Yes.
It's because it's being, some have characterized as simply they're being limoed around the city, and I wanted to give it an opportunity to...
It's not the case.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, on that point, what gives rise to that, chief? In what circumstance does this individual drive the battalion chief?
To emergencies.
To emergencies. So, if there is an emergency, they're in the suburban, right?
They're in the suburban.
The command suburban, and so this firefighter drives that piece of emergency equipment...
limo?
No, it's not. And we, as a fire command staff, when we had our budget discussion meetings, that position came up for discussion. And each of us have served in that role as that operations battalion chief, and we have all been on key incidents or had crises that arise on a daily basis, where that person is more than just a driver. A lack of understanding creates that type of comment that this is just a driver.
Okay, two last questions. One has to do with another perception, that has to do with overtime in general. There's also a perception, perhaps on the other side of the fence, says, you know, of course we pay overtime, we have firefighters up in the hills fighting fires. We have, how much of our overtime is actually going to firefighters up in the hills fighting fires?
Last year, there was approximately 194,000 that was reimbursed to us, or going to be reimbursed to us by either the state or the federal government, for our firefighters out of the community of Glendale. And it's reimbursed at a slightly higher rate than what we pay it out at. We're gonna collect back approximately 220,000. So all of our master mutual aid time, where we had the Sierra Madre fire, for example, we had some people over there assisting with that fire. That fire is gonna be reimbursed back to the community of Glendale, to the Glendale Fire Department, to cover those expenses. It's a very small portion.
So a very small portion deals with our personnel being up in the hills-
Yes.
-fighting. And the last question I have, I'll turn it over to some of my colleagues, is you mentioned Stations 23 and 29. What about a station like 28 where it is, in other words, how do you make the, how do you land on those particular stations for the, anyone watching, and like me, who, for example, how do you make the distinction between a station like 28, which is up on La Cressena and on New York Avenue, versus, say, Chevy Chase or Montrose or any other station?
Well, it was hard to make a decision for any of the stations, but the decision had to be made. Station 28 is on the far northwest corner of the city. It's really on an island, and they can get pretty far removed, just as well as Station 23 up in Chevy Chase Canyon. It takes a while for help to arrive. But Station 28's busier than Station 23 in Chevy Chase Canyon. They run a lot more calls. They have the freeway right there on the 210. There's a lot of significant accidents that take place there, and their runs up in that north end, you can get pretty far removed from the community there, and they're gonna need that help up there. Now Chevy Chase needs that help also, so it's a hard decision. The reason why 29 was selected is because we do have the ladder truck in that station along with the rescue ambulance. So if they all arrived on scene at the same time, you can reallocate resources immediately to tackle the immediate task. So the difference between Station 23 and 28, the challenges are greater in 28's district than 23. That's not to reduce the challenges in 23's district. I mean, it's very, you know, there's a lot of things that can go wrong up in Chevy Chase Canyon, and it's gonna take a while for help to arrive, but we had to make a decision.
Okay, and the follow-up to that is, if you had to select a third station, what station would it be?
That's a very difficult question, and I'll give you, I'll give you a rundown in how I look at this. All of our downtown companies are extremely busy. Station 21, 22 in the very south end, 25 at Chevy Chase and Verdugo, and 26 at Stocker and Bran. They run an extreme number of calls. I mean, to reduce those stations would just be asking for a problem in the future. Station 24, hazmat van is out of that station. And we have an obligation to make sure we have qualified hazardous material trained personnel on that resource. So that became out of the mix. And I guess that'd be, that's a very difficult question.
Well, again, you also left out of that mix number 28 again.
I left 28 out, because 28 has some challenges. LA City is on the other side of the hill, down the 210 freeway. You have 63s in the county to assist, but I guess 28 may be the third choice, but they have some significant challenges up there.
Yeah, I'm not even suggesting that is the case. I just, I wanna have some background also, because we're going-
And I'd like to just clarify, you know. I would not wanna reduce staffing in any of these stations. I mean, I know what takes place on these fire engines. I've worked at every fire station here in the city. I've had a number of fires in many different districts around the cities, car accidents and everything else. And I know how important it is to have enough resources to solve a problem. And not to have enough resources to solve a problem, which means you have to pick and choose what you're gonna do. And that can be the difference between a life safety for a civilian or a life safety for a firefighter on the decisions we make. That's what it comes down to. We'll have to change our operations.
Okay, thank you. Let me go to my colleagues, excuse me, let me start with Mr. Weaver.
From my standpoint, we haven't seen all the departments yet. We have, what, $2 million programming capacity, what we're talking about? Till I see the other departments, whatever, I'm not willing to eliminate six firefighters. If a community doesn't have public safety prioritized first, let's please, fire infrastructure, if we don't have that prioritized first, nothing else matters. And I think we'll rue the day that we start cutting firefighters and cutting some of the other supports as well. Police go out and enforce, the fire go out and save lives, whether it's in the fires or the paramedic services, whatever. So, I mean, at this point, of the ones I've seen, this is one department, I'm not willing to cut the firefighters and maybe some of the other positions. Little I know, is what I'm hearing from the chief here. I'm not a firefighter, so I doubt if he's standing up here and giving us a bunch of bull. He's being sincere, and I think we have to really take it seriously, what he's saying.
Chief, just for the record, I'm not saying you're giving us a bunch of bull.
Oh, I-
And I know you're not implying that, but just so the implication isn't taken to heart by any of my constituents, or my colleagues or their constituents, I don't think you're giving us a bunch of bull, but, and I'm not a firefighter, but you're also not a council member. And I have, I have a responsibility that you don't, just as you have responsibilities that I don't.
You're smart.
And I've gotta make some, I've gotta make some decisions also, and it relates to every department, and so that's why I asked the questions. Also, I know, as you know, and as most people know, these are questions that are being asked by a number of people, and, you know, I'm asking you to help educate me. It's quite the contrary, I'm asking you to help educate me. So, I think Councilmember Quintero was next.
Okay. I was gonna ask the same questions Mr. Drayman was asking about why 23 and 29, but I think you pretty well answered them. Well, I'm gonna wait, this afternoon, we'll be talking about overtime, and I'm also gonna be waiting to see what, what other options we have, other than putting together three, three firefighter engine teams in Chevy Chase and Montrose. Montrose has had an awful lot of multifamily neighborhoods, that area with more on the way, unfortunately. And Chevy Chase, isolated up in the hillsides. I'm just not too enthusiastic about this whole concept of three-man engine companies. I'll wait to see what you have to say about the overtime, and maybe whatever cuts we can make in overtime, and whatever other options are available. So I'll be waiting on, on this particular decision.
Okay, Councilmember Najarian, and then Councilmember Yusefian.
Thanks, Chief. The only, the only standard that I'm familiar with for rating fire agencies is the ISO rating. And I am not gonna vote for any cut in the budget of the fire department that's gonna result in a reduction to a Class 2. Absolutely, positively, never will I vote for that. That being said, what I would like to know is, and I'm not sure, I know that there's different components to the rating. I would like to get a, get an opinion from someone in the fire department as to were these cuts to be implemented, what our rating would possibly be. I know there's no way of knowing until the actual, you know, official agency comes in to do that, but I'd like to know if that's gonna jeopardize our, jeopardize our rating. But what I would like you to do is to be a little more creative, perhaps, in, in the reductions, and try and preserve the fire. I mean, I'm not sold on the three firefighters, and we're gonna hear today that three is good enough, but for me, good enough isn't good enough. If we can have four, we should be doing what we can. Again, it's a, it's a policy issue, it's a philosophical issue, as to how many resources you wanna put to a particular type of service. So I would like to see other ways, perhaps using, you know, and I don't know how a fire department runs, but if there's any way to get some volunteers or part-time to do some of the service, the clerical work, or the non-firefighting, perform some of the non-firefighting functions, I really would send you back to sharpen your pencil and see if there's another way of finding some of the cuts.
I can, if I can comment on that real brief. Our clerical, our admin side, it's very thin currently. We have our Fire Prevention Bureau, and that's approximately 21 people, and they're taxed right now. I mean, with all the different things going on in the community, that's not the place where we have chose to make any reductions, because our fire prevention team is, they're working around the clock, as many of the other divisions. Our Verdugo Dispatch Center is funded by the agencies that contract for services. Other than that, there is not much admin side. We have a training officer and a training captain, we have some clerical staff, but other than that, there's not much, especially with the eliminations of our support captain, our PIO, our public education firefighter. We have some clerical staff, and we're reorganizing our clerical staff to give the general fund a cost savings of approximately $4,000. And that's changing from four to three, two OS2s and two OS1s, reducing one OS1. That's the amount charged to the general fund. There's not much there on the admin side, and, no, but we have some ideas that you're gonna hear about this afternoon, that's gonna help us through this.
Before we go to Mr. Yusefian and Mr. Quintero's follow-up question, before we even go there, Mr. City Manager, you had your hand up with regard to-
It was Mr. Najarian's question about getting a clear understanding as to the implications of the three-man engine company on our ISO rating. We do have the very detailed rating form from when we were last rated, six years ago, seven years ago.
It was early 90s.
Early 90s. So we have that, and it's a very detailed breakdown of all the various components that they look at. So the staff can probably get some sense as to the implications of this, just by pulling up the form of 10 or 11 years ago.
Yes.
And looking to see what likely would we have been assigned in points had we had a three-person engine company in those two stations. Can give you some sense of that. But again, as the mayor pointed out, having four-man engine companies doesn't guarantee that you won't lose your rating, because it is so dependent on so many other things.
And we're gonna check about places like Pasadena where they don't have a-
Yes, I'll have that information for you this afternoon.
...second class, but they are four-man.
This year, we are, we have been contacted to-
Just so we get the information out in this segment.
Yes.
What was the overtime last year? Do you remember the amount in dollar terms?
I think this year, we're estimated for to hit 5.7 million in overtime, and last year, 06-07 was 4.9.
I'm sorry, what were the numbers again?
And 07-08, I think it's estimated at 5.7 or 5.8, and in 06-07 at 4.9. But it should be noted that the fifth RA, RA 22, went into service March 1st, 2007, which affected that number.
Yeah. And we're gonna talk about it later, I just wanted, like I say, at least in this segment, to get a feel for what the numbers were.
Councilmember Yusefian.
Chief, five years ago, fire station in Chevy Chase, how many men?
Maybe approximately five years ago that that station was three firefighters, maybe a little longer, but approximately. At one point in time, that station was a three-person fire station.
It was three firefighters, actually, four years ago. It was three firefighters, probably about three years ago. I think three years ago is when we went from three firefighters to four, and Mr. Manukian was one who was pushing for that, to change that. We had the money, and we did that at the time. At that time, even though Chevy Chase had three firefighters, we had a Class 1 fire rating, didn't we? Right. We've had first fire, Class 1 fire rating for a long time, and, and I was told by your predecessor that that will reduce your insurances, and so on and so forth. Well, let me tell you something. I went around looking and touting to insurance companies that we have a fire, you know, rating of Class 1 fire rating. Do you know how much it reduced my insurance?
I don't know that.
Zero. They don't care what you have. What they care is where you're located. If you're located around a brush, they're gonna charge you a certain amount. If you're located in an area that there is not brush, and it's like in the middle of the town, you're gonna get a certain amount. So what we have been told, when I was in the coordinating council, and later on in the city council, and by Chief Hens, and later on by Chief Gray, and you haven't told me this, so I'm not gonna put that on you, that Mr. Starbitt was absolutely right. It's just a bragging rights, you know? Whether you're Class 1, Class 2, or zero class, means nothing to me. What means is, when you provide services, that's everything to me. And this fire department has provided exemplary service. They don't look to see whether or not that Class 1 is written on the fire truck. Your firefighters provide that service because they're highly trained, the water is there, and water is actually better now, because we have upgraded the service. So that's what it is to me. In all due respect, and I understand it was very tough, you just basically got annoyed by fire, hey, we're both in the same boat. I got annoyed by fire when I became mayor, too. I had to deal with the town center headache. But now you have to deal with this deficit issue. What bothers me is, I look at all this, and the last part is overtime, eliminate overtime, only $30,000.
That overtime that's addressed right there is the support overtime for going to training and classes and meetings.
I understand that, I understand that. But earlier on, my colleague asked about a $5.7 million overtime. So, you know, if, if, I'm not a fire chief, and I don't have to do the balancing act, but isn't there a way to keep firefighters and reduce the overtime?
Mr. Mayor-
Or, or I'm not understanding this properly.
Mr. City Manager, you hopefully will come out of this afternoon's meeting, and you'll have a better understanding, because it is, is a difficult one, just intuitively, to get your arms around. The thinking is, reduce your overtime, we don't have to cut these positions. The amount of overtime we have, as you'll see this afternoon, is driven by the fact that we have four-man constant manning requirements on our equipment. And because we have just enough staff to accomplish that goal, every time somebody is sick or absent or off doing something else, you have to pay overtime to maintain the four-man constant manning. That is what drives the bulk of the overtime. So going to three-man engine companies at these stations will end up reducing the amount of overtime.
Yes.
That's where you'll see the bulk of the savings of this million dollars is in the overtime budget, because you won't have to as often at those stations fill to get back to a four-man engine company. Gives them more people to move around and utilize to maintain four-man and three-man staffing levels. And you'll see that this afternoon. This overtime isn't driven just by the sheer fact that people are off fighting fires in the mountains, as we pointed out.
Now, I'm gonna keep my mouth shut and wait till this afternoon- No, I'm going to keep my mouth shut and wait till this afternoon when I have a better understanding. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Sure appreciate it. Let's move on to human resources.
Here's where the controversial stuff...
That's right. How many stations do you have?
And Matt, Matt has constant manning of one person himself.
Morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Human Resources controls two general fund budgets, one being the general human resources budget, the other being citywide training. Our cuts are quite simple. I have the luxury at this time of having a vacancy for a mid-management level position of a HR analyst too, which I'm putting forth. On the training side, this budget runs in the neighborhood of 150,000, 160,000. We're proposing a cut to the Ray Thorn contractual services, as opposed to some other areas of training and management development that are a bit of higher priority. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Mr. Yusefian.
Is this the same contract that this city council passed about three weeks ago for $25,000?
Yes.
Thank you.
That was Mr. Thorn?
Yes, yes.
Anyone else?
I just have a question.
Yes, Mr. Yusefian.
What would be the implications if we were to require more time of Mr. Thorn in some of our management issues? Would he be done on an hourly rate? Would that be a lot more typically?
Yep, I'm going to defer that to Mr. McFaul, because I don't hire Mr. Thorn.
Mr. Thorn actually currently works on an hourly rate now, so, and we've just, we've put a cap on his contract, and so we balance the usage of him throughout the year. So if we weren't back to use him for more management issues throughout the year, then we would somehow need to backfill the amount in his contract that's being eliminated through this proposal.
Would it be at the same rate? I mean, are we getting a discounted rate because it's a contract amount?
Yes.
And just, you know, have a very high rate for additional hours afterwards?
He actually just, he actually charges, as far as consultants goes, a relatively modest rate. It's the same, well, we only work with him by contract, so frankly, I don't know what it would be. I know what his private sector rate is, and that is substantially higher than what he charges minimum rates.
I have a question for you, I'm not sure, while we're speaking of Mr. Thorn, I just thought there'd be a wonderful name for Senator, by the way. Be a very difficult fellow, I think, his name is Senator Thorn. Anyway, what exactly does Mr. Thorn do for those of us like me who are relatively new and have seen him once in passing, and that's it?
The primary effort that Mr. Thorn has been involved with in the last couple years has been assisting, providing assistance on our strategic planning process. On an ongoing basis, he does, at the executive level, periodic executive meetings that primarily have to do, once again, with strategic planning efforts, and then will also work with our management staff on, primarily again, team building strategic planning efforts. That's his primary engagement that we have, and that's a few times a year that he's brought in for that. Beyond that, he is brought in when there are very specific issues. If there are issues between departments or within a department that just simply require a skilled facilitator to bring all parties to the table and be able to come to a meaningful resolution of the issues, then he'll be engaged for doing that. That's primarily what he does.
You know, I have to ask, because I know what strategic planning means when we're, you know, talking about the Pentagon. I'm not sure I know how Mr. Thorn, what he does with regard, helps with strategic planning when it comes to our departments and management services. What the heck does this guy do?
In that case, when we, for the last, about two years, two and a half years, we've been in the budgetary strategic planning, where we engage with the community, engage with department's management in the department to help set a general overall direction, information that was reconciled back with city council periodically, we used him as a facilitator just to help focus the efforts of the strategic planning process. So to what do we, how best to go out to engage into the community, what do we do with the information that we receive from the community, what are some options of how you can process and present the information, then put it into a form that can be shared with the city council with the community, just cause the coordination of the 16 different departments and the information that's gained from the community in a way that is, that is meaningful, and to ensure that we continue on the next steps.
Mr. Quintero.
What is the total budget for this gentleman or the organization? How much have we spent, for instance, last year? Was it 50,000 or 30,000 or...?
For Ray Thorn, it's generally, past few years, been in the neighborhood of 20 to $25,000 per year.
Because it just seems to me we could find someone within the organization, one of the senior managers, et cetera, maybe has a master's in public administration, or a master's in social science, and maybe we can send them to a seminar and pay a few hundred, or maybe even a couple of thousand dollars, and maybe that person could be the one that does some of the things that Mr. Thorn does. Nothing personal against Mr. Thorn, but if we're trying to save a few bucks here and there, that might work just as well.
Mr. City Manager.
Let me give you some perspective on it from the standpoint of how I utilize him, the few times that we do utilize him in the course of the year. Every four months or so, we try and carve out a day with all of the executives to get out of City Hall. We go someplace in the city, and we spend the day really looking at the kinds of issues that we're going to be confronted with currently and in the future. Some of that has to do with interdepartment relations, how well we do or we don't work together, issues that arise between us and among us. So much of it has to do with anticipating what are the problems on the horizon, and how do we, as a collective group, come together to address them. Frankly, he facilitates those meetings so that, so that we aren't having to facilitate ourselves, so that I can be part of the group to, to give input and not, not be the city manager, frankly, in those roles. He helps facilitate those. I think they're very useful. He was, he was being used by Glendale when I arrived 10 years ago, and one of the first questions I had was, what's his role and is he really useful? I found that he is, I think he's a very good organizational development person. I used him a great deal when I first came here, frankly, to build a better relationship, working relationship among the executives, on the executive team, and then among their direct report managers, so the departments would work better together. This is an organization of 2,400 people, you know, you rub up against each other, tensions occur, relationships are critically important to us working well together.
You really didn't say that to us.
So you have a, I mean, those things naturally occur in an organization. He's a person who can come in, and I think fairly effectively, as an outsider, but with a knowledge of the organization, help us frankly address those kinds of relationship and effectiveness issues that arise all the time.
Sort of beginning to have the feeling, you know, like the old movie, The President's Analyst, and that's why I was just asking.
A bit, a bit.
All right. Any other questions related to human resources? No, okay. Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Information Services.
Good morning. The most popular department, I might add.
You came in that way, let's see what happens.
Let's see what happens when I go out. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We were asked, like the other departments, to come up with a 5% cut, and being the IT nerds that we are, 5.0 is where we're at.
No more, no less.
No more, no less. It's interesting, a lot like the other support departments, our role is purely support. Please fire everybody here, put up computers. Some of the bigger challenges are the wireless, PeopleSoft, and the software and hardware we have to maintain. So going down one by one, we're eliminating a position that's currently filled. The hourly position is, at 6,000 is not really a position, it's all hourly money we have in one account to kind of, a lot of times we have different implementations need help, so we're going to eliminate the money there. The ever-popular Ray Thorn, we're cutting 2,500 out of our portion of that. Gardner Group is a kind of an industry standard. You can go to the Gardner Group and see where your vendor stands within a certain realm, like what's PeopleSoft doing, do they have a market share or not? It kind of helps. The internal service funds, we're going to reduce our hourly wages of that by 40,000. There are going to be a couple others. Ron mentioned, Ron Ayers had mentioned his reduction of PeopleSoft over the total course of the 5%, and the transfers, we will be down, or cutting the PeopleSoft by 372,000 overall. That'll mean a reduction of upgrades, rollouts, and modules that we will not be implementing. FileNet Internal Service Fund, we'll be reducing that by 67,000. Software replacement, we're going to take that down by 40, and that will actually negate the transfer of 200,000, because further in the transfers, they're going to reduce it by 160,000. And the last is the Hardware Replacement ISF Internal Service Fund, take that down by 38,000. And that will bring us to our 5% of 250,000. And overall, along with the other ones, they, I want to mention that the Wireless ISF will be reduced by 655,000, and that's going to delay our radios going over to the police department. With that, if there's any questions?
Mr. Yusefian.
PeopleSoft, you said that you were going to delay or eliminate certain patches, certain upgrades, and so on and so forth, to the PeopleSoft. Would, would that create a problem with the PeopleSoft as a whole somewhere down the line, if we are going to be so far behind?
We will not be so far behind. I don't want to paint a gloom and doom. There are modules that we would like to implement, as other cities have. This will negate those, but we will keep doing patches, because patches are very important. We will not fall behind.
What modules you're not going to do?
Uh, there's a, I don't know that we have the inventory module, we don't have a, there's one the city treasurer is looking at. Most of the modules for PeopleSoft are fairly expensive. PeopleSoft, there's nothing cheap about any part of this.
Understand.
But again, last patch or upgrade we did, last upgrade, excuse me, was July 2005. And if you get into a lot of these software packages, you can upgrade, I mean, when they first come out, or you can roll it out until you're almost forced into it where they say, all right, you're going to have to pay no matter what, and then have to do a double at the end of it. So we'd just be slower on that. Slower on, a lot of departments will come in, and they'll want different reports created, generated. We'll have to go on a priority basis on those. So we'll go ahead and work with the user group, and as a group, figure out what is the most important, and then work down that list. Some of those will not be implemented.
When do you have, 2005 is when you did the last upgrade.
The last upgrade, right.
So when is the next upgrade you have to do that they're going to come to you and say, that's it?
I don't know, we haven't have to. We could upgrade right now, and we're delaying that.
Right, but what I'm, you just said there's a time that...
Right, we haven't been given that time, an absolute cutoff date for that.
So you don't know what that time is?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless Ron has been given...
I think the man with the cutoff is here.
Do you have a cutoff?
Just don't cut me. Mr. Yusefian, sorry. We have, we're currently on version 8.9 on financials and version 8.8 on our payroll system. Version 9 is out. We don't like to be on any version that ends in a .0, so version 9.0 is out, and those tend to be more buggy and have more problems, so we're going to wait at least until 9.1 comes out. That's supposed to come out in the fall. So we would be looking sometime in '09 to upgrade both on the financials and the payroll system. And we could still do that even with these cuts, but as Scott mentioned, we were looking at implementing the budget module, implementing the treasury module, and expanding a little bit more, I think, on the AR module. Those will either be delayed significantly or maybe never done.
Can, can that be done in 9.1 time?
Well, it's actually, we, it's actually a brand-new module that we'd have to bring up and implement, so the upgrade is just taking what we're currently using in payroll, and HR, and benefits, and all the financial systems that we're currently using, and just upgrading it to the new version.
Right, but those new modules, can that be done at that time, when you upgrade? No?
The upgrade is significant enough, usually the upgrades take anywhere from six to nine months.
Okay, so it'd be too much of a work.
Right.
And without the inventory module, how do you keep inventory currently?
Actually, our inventory module is up, and GWP is using it. We were looking at expanding the inventory to Public Works.
And what would that do?
That would fully integrate it within the financial system versus they have, and I don't want to speak out of turn out of Steve. Steve, I think, has his own standalone package that he manages out of mechanical maintenance.
Mr. McFaul.
The, the two modules that we are most interested in moving to the next step was the budget, because we don't, right now, the way that we do the budget while it works, it's a pieced-together system that has developed over a number of few years, a little ago out of the mainframe, has moved into Excel and a variety of other ways. PeopleSoft actually has a very robust budget module. It is not simple to implement, though. As you can imagine, it is, as it should be, it's linked into all aspects of the financial system. Will cause the city to do budgeting in a slightly different way, just to accommodate the way it's laid out. Ultimately, it would pay a very high dividend of having it in. The second was the inventory, because trying to keep track of all the assets of the city, as you can imagine, is a very complex matter, so it is partially implemented. Eventually, we would like to have it all implemented, simply because it would give us a better, a better way to manage all the various assets of the city.
And if we did those two, what, how much, which one are those two?
Budget was, believe it or not, budget was a few hundred thousand just to buy. Forget about consultants and implementing, just to purchase, out of the box. And then it would be maybe six months, nine months, maybe 12 months to implement, and...
I'm just trying to figure out, on that list, as you talked about it, which one is the budget, and which one is the inventory?
This is...
Oh, it's not there?
It's not there. This is actually the funding going into the ISF.
I need to interject here, gentlemen.
Sorry to interrupt.
We have exactly an hour, we have about seven, seven more department components plus some additional material to get through. I'm going to encourage my colleagues to speak to, that wasn't the word I was going to use, the phrase I was going to use, but I want to encourage my colleagues also to pick up the phone and contact some of the department heads with some of these...
Well, Mr. Mayor, in all due respect, I think the problem is that he mentioned something that is not in there, and I'm assuming that what he mentioned is in there, and I'm trying to figure out whether we should cut it or we shouldn't.
Understand.
And so what he's telling me has nothing to do with this, so irrelevant.
Yeah, I was trying to try, tie into the...
Don't confuse me anymore.
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
Do not confuse Councilmember Yusefian. We're all in trouble if that happens.
We've got time. If you would like to come up, I mean, this, I got spreadsheets, I can amaze you with spreadsheets here.
Fine, we'll talk.
Okay.
Have your people contact my people, and we'll be there.
Okay. Library, please.
Good morning.
Mayor, members of the council. When we looked at our 5% cut, we tried as much as possible to minimize public service and really look at the way we do business and think about how we can do business differently. And the first thing on the list is a proposal to close the Chevy Chase library. It's our most underutilized site. We, in the month of March, we checked out over 100,000 books, and out of, out of that 100,000, I think we checked out 815 at the Chevy Chase branch library. It accounts for about less than half percent of our total gate count, the number of people that walk through our door, which is about a million a year. The overtime is related to our Sunday hours at Central Library, and we're proposing using part-time staff instead of full-time staff, where we have to pay full-time staff to work, pay them overtime to work on Sundays. The third item is eliminate library supervisor. This position is becoming vacant in June. It's a supervisor at one of our branch libraries, and what we'd like to do is think about how we utilize our managers and possibly consolidate, consolidate one of our managers to oversee two sites, and put more librarians into the Grandview branch operation at a lower pay scale, but to ensure that we continue the same public service that we've always had. Hourly wages, system-wide, the library depends heavily on hourly wages based on the fact that we are open 283 hours a year. We don't have normal nine-to-five business hours, and we really couldn't run the library with just full-time staff. So the 179,000 reflects about a 10% cut to our hourly budget. It would mean eliminating some hours, we're proposing eliminating... We're proposing eliminating our evening hours at Central Library between eight and nine P.M., Monday through Thursday, so four hours at Central Library. We're about to open the Adams Square Library, and while we wanted to open that for six days a week, we're proposing to only allow it to be open five days a week and eliminate Sunday hours. The cut in hourly wages would also mean that we would need to redeploy our full-time staff. Maybe they would work more evenings, more Saturdays, and of course, we would have to eliminate some of the services that are underutilized in the library, as well as some of our very popular services like homework help and our computer training classes, to name a few. PAR's hourly wages is related to the hourly wage cut and benefits that would, would cut with that. Miscellaneous MNO expenditures, that would substantially decrease our travel expenses, our training expenses, some of our office supplies, new furniture. It's a little bit of this and that in our MNO budget. And finally, my goal was to minimize our cut to our core business, which is providing books and other information materials to the public. So this fifty thousand, but I still have to do it because there's not much else to cut from, so this fifty thousand dollars reflects about a ten percent cut to our books and online resource materials budget. I'm here for questions.
Okay. Questions, comments? Okay. The only part of this that I have a question about is the periodicals and books, and that is an area where I would not want to see a cut, if possible. Not that I would wanna see cuts in some of the other areas you mentioned, but this is sort of the core of what a library is. And so how does that change your, how would that change your five percent number?
We'd probably have to take it from hourly wages, which would, in turn...
No, no, no. I mean, if you simply, simply put that number back, your five percent would drop to...
Four-point-seven-five.
Uh, let's see. I don't know.
Be four-point-seven-five.
And I'm hearing several numbers being thrown...
About four and a half. I'm hearing from Michelle, whose number I will rely on.
So that is four-point-five.
The other thing I should mention that I forgot to mention with closing Chevy Chase, and this, this actually doesn't reflect the full budget for Chevy Chase, because Chevy Chase does include a full-time person that mans not only Chevy Chase but also our bookmobile, so it would not eliminate his position. But what we're proposing with Chevy Chase is to spend the next year thinking about using that site as a revenue generator. I've had a lot of feedback from the community that that would be a great location, even though it's a little remote for meetings and, you know, conferences, workshops on a revenue-generating basis.
Councilmember Nagerian.
Brief question. We are expanding service at the Adams Square, and so does this budget, because it hasn't yet been staffed, are you, to what level of reduction would you be affording the Adams Square, if any, from, because it's new service but hasn't been implemented yet?
Right now, what we're proposing is about, well, is a cut in hours by four hours to the tune of about ten thousand dollars, which would come directly out of the hourly wages.
Four hours a week.
And the branch is open, or we're proposing, I have it in front of me, I don't, but I think about forty hours a week total.
Okay, other questions?
What are the hours? Because a lot of people ask me.
Yeah, I'm gonna...
Don't do it yet, just, just send me an email.
Okay.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I thank you. Let's move on to Management Services.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Management Services consists of the City Manager's Office, which also includes City Council, City Auditor, Special Events, sponsorship of events, and Citywide Membership and Dues. And our total cuts for the five percent is one-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand, seven-hundred dollars, of which hourly wages is thirty thousand dollars. Initially, when the Commission on the Status of Women started about four years ago, there was a bit of money that we had set aside for hourly, and we have found that we don't need that money, because the current staff, our full-time staff, as well as our clerical staff, has been able to pick that amount of work up, so we don't need that money. And minimum staffing on Fridays. We do utilize GYA employees on Fridays, excuse me, for minimum staffing issues that we have to help us with the front counter staff. Contractual Services consists of a number of items that aren't listed here, and that is the Glendale brochure. We wanted to put a Glendale brochure together that would include all department's informational packet, basically, for the city, for, for community members, I should say. Temporary clerical assistance, a contract that we have with Rattan and Tucker that we use for our cable franchise. We're slowly starting to decrease that amount, and we're comfortable with a fifteen thousand dollar decrease in that. Community Survey, every two to three years, we conduct a community survey of our citizens, and that's approximately twenty-five thousand dollars. If council wished to do so, we would come to council at the time and get an appropriation at the time versus setting the money aside in our contractual services. Media clips and miscellaneous contractual, which we have a set aside of seven thousand dollars. A decrease of travel, Membership and Dues, and this is Citywide, and this is Conference of Mayors. We haven't really gone to the Conference of Mayors or utilized that group for a number of years, and at this time, we think that, that we could decrease that amount and that's a membership fee of four, it's actually fifty-two hundred dollars, but we've, to make the five percent decrease is, is four thousand dollars. Miscellaneous MNO expenditures includes training, office supplies, business meetings, and miscellaneous supplies. And general supplies is, is a fifty thousand dollar, and that's, that's a big hit. And, and that is, when initially the Commission on the Status of Women started four to five years ago, we had an infusion of monies that all came into the general supplies portion, as well as some monies for printing and graphics, not just associated with the Commission, but, but the rest of the department that was in that account. And, you know, the Commission on the Status of Women has been doing a lot of fundraising on their own and have been able to maintain their own services, and so we are proposing a fifty thousand dollar decrease in the general supplies. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, let me go to Councilmember Nagerian.
The ten thousand reduction in travel, what does that mean? Is there, in other words, is there a per councilman reduction or per person reduction?
That would be a staff reduction. It would not be a council reduction, mister.
I heard rumor out there that we're cutting back on our Christmas party. Is that something...
That's a Citywide.
Oh, is it not?
That is a Citywide cutback. It's not a Management Services dollar amount. That is a twenty-two thousand dollar general fund hit. If we were, if council were to, to reduce that, total city cost of that is thirty-six thousand dollars, and those dollar amounts are divvied up amongst all the departments within the city, and so each department, dependent upon the number of employees that they have, pick up a portion of the cost of the holiday party.
And so there was a proposal that that be eliminated?
Correct.
That's among the, the Citywide reductions, so it's coming up here.
Coming up.
After the departments.
The general supplies, again, fifty thousand, that's, could you, I didn't quite, is it related to the Commission on the Status of Women?
Part of it is related to the Commission on the Status of Women. A number of years ago, four years ago, when the Commission initially started, we weren't quite sure exactly what the cost of, the administrative costs of the Commission was, was going to entail. Council's direction to the Commission was that they were to do their own fundraising, et cetera. However, you did approve an amount of money exceeding the salary of the individual that we've hired on Lana to basically support the Commission. So that's part of it. The other part of it is printing and graphics as a whole. There was some money some years ago placed in that account for just printing for our different programs that we have within, within the city that Management Services sponsors, basically. It's a, it's a, we're mostly at, I mean, all of these things that you see are, are in the MNO outside of hourly wages, and we are a small department, and, and if you, you know, look at the Auditor budget and ours, which includes the City Council, you know, it's, it's a small dollar amount in, in terms of, it's just a small budget. It's, it's a lot of salaries and MNOs, because it's, it's people-driven. We're an internal service department that does a lot of work with all of the sixteen departments that are here within the city. And so if we were to, you know, continue on with cuts, we would have to look at a couple of programs that we have in place currently. It would be very difficult for us to cut any more within them.
Councilmember Quintero, then Councilmember Weaver.
In terms of the Christmas party, it seems like we could reduce the cost drastically if we use the Civic Auditorium. Seems like that would also tie in with our trying to get more usage out of the auditorium. It was done there in the past, is that correct?
Correct.
I remember. It was done at the Civic.
Councilmember Weaver.
I'll make my pitch here. You don't have to give me an answer. But Mr. Kasotkin talked about his Xerox machine. Got rid of him, got a more new, efficient one. I know our Xerox machine is constantly having maintenance done on it. Monthly, whatever. It seems extraordinary amount of maintenance that has to be done. I don't know if it's on a contract or a long lease is, but I'd make a pitch to get a more efficient one, so we don't have all the labor cost association with maintaining it.
We agree.
Councilmember Yusefian.
You mentioned on the eighty-two thousand dollar brochure for Glendale. What did that brochure entail?
We, we have not produced one.
So there was never a brochure?
No. We had set aside ten thousand dollars in our contractual services account to be able to produce one.
And what was that supposed to do?
What was the brochure going to be? It was going to be a compilation of information from all of our departments. That would be a marketing piece. That was the vision. Marketing piece within the community in terms of providing information.
What do we do?
Correct.
Okay.
And there's a whole lot of departments. I mean, Community Development and Housing has a piece of that, and they have some great information, and so, so we think that...
Well, we had a part of that that was kept covered when we were doing the, the budget summary. So this was like trying to...
An overlap.
The other thing, on the fifty thousand dollars, you talked about some savings on supply, certain things. The, the Management Services runs several programs, like Unity Fest, Cesar Chavez, the commemoration. There's printings that takes place and all that stuff. Would they still, still happen, or...
Yes.
So that's not...
No, that won't be touched. That is part of the Special Events account. Part of the contractual services that you see here also includes a decrease of ten thousand dollars to the Special Events account, and that ten thousand dollar decrease will only reflect, because this coming year, we were going to have two Unity Fests, one in the fall and one in the springtime, but we're gonna maintain doing just the one, and that will not affect any of the events that we have through the City.
We belong to a lot of different organizations, and sometimes we get magazines from them and so on and so forth. Many cases, a lot of us don't even read the magazines, we just throw them away. Have you looked at those to see? We do this once every five years. We kinda go through all our subscriptions to see if any of them are worth keeping. If they're not, we kinda ace them. Have you looked at those?
Our periodical subscription account is five hundred dollars. And so it's minimal.
Okay. And Independent Cities Association, I haven't gone to, I think, one of them for a long time. How often do we go to that? I mean, do we...
It's on an annual basis. I know there are a, a couple of people...
Two, there's two.
They do, they do two. The Santa Barbara and Branch of Bernardo. Many of you have gone to both.
Right, right. But, I mean, what is their dues?
Pardon?
What are their dues?
Um, ICA, I don't remember. I'll have to do a follow-up.
Let me suggest we'll follow up and bring you back a whole list of all those members, city memberships.
All right. Mr. Yusefian, do you have anything else? Okay. Thank you, Esmond. Let's move on to Parks, Recreation, and Community Services.
Mayor Draymond.
Good morning.
Councilmembers. We've got a total of six-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand dollars that we need to cut from our budget. As you can see, most are positions, actually, all of them are positions, because we run pretty lean on our maintenance and operations dollars. Past five years that I've been here, I don't think we've gotten an increase, save for the additional new parks that we've gotten. So really is, at this point, eliminating positions. One is, eliminate one vacant administrative assistant position in the administrative unit, and our, you know, this was, this is one level below an administrative analyst. What's gonna happen is our administrative analyst has been able to pick up a lot of the work that this position would have done. So, again, the administrative analyst will pick up most of this work, and then we have another senior analyst that can also help with this. We're transferring two project managers from the CIP to the CIP Fund. We have four others in the CIP Fund. It just makes more sense to do this. They are gonna be linked to the projects that they're working on and charged to the projects that they're working on, so at least they have more ownership, and we're able to track their, their time a little bit better as well. We're gonna eliminate one position, which is, at this point, let me just check, our Park Services Manager, this is someone who maintains our contracts with the landscape contract companies, and what we're gonna do is move that person over to a vacant position we have that oversees the park services. We have three sections. One section, there's a vacancy. We're gonna move that person over. He still will be doing fifty percent of the time doing contractual services and overseeing the other section. So we think we can pick that up there. We have a vacant equipment operator, another position in the Park Services section. Our gardeners are able to mow the smaller sections. This was a person that would just go in and mow. So that'll be picked up by the gardeners at this point, and some of their duties picked up by the laborers. We have one position, which is a pesticide applicator at this point. Again, we have train staff, we're training staff to do that portion of it, herbicide, pesticides. We'll be able to pick that up with the remaining staff. We have about six staff people will be able to do that in the different sections. We have a vacant office service specialist at one of the community centers. This is more administrative position. We're gonna pick up a lot of the payroll and purchasing, some of that function in the administrative unit, so the impact there will be minimal to the community center. The other staff in the community centers will pick up the filing and some of the other work associated with that administrative position. Finally, we have a reduction in the recreation programs' operating hours. We're trying to minimize that as much as possible. It may be an hour here, an hour there with four or five of our, our community centers, ARC, Maple Park, PCC, and Spar Heights. So we'll adjust the hours, maybe close a half an hour earlier on some days, an hour earlier on others. So that's basically the impact to the department at this point for these, for these cuts.
Comments, questions? I see none, Mr. Champion. Thank you so much. Planning. Mr. Higginson.
Good morning, some mayor members of the council.
Excuse me, one second.
Before you start, it just dawned on me, there's your Ray Thorn right there. And who will be discussing the new design review process with the constituents.
Plus, he's the guy we're talking about.
That's the Dr. Phil of the...
All right, just had him come over. Our, our department primarily, actually, we have less than four percent of our department budget is MNO, therefore, any cuts that we wanted to see would have to be in salaries. We, it was, we're just lucky that two of our interns recently gave notice, and one in the comprehensive planning section and one in the case processing section, because they got full-time jobs. The intern, the internship program in the planning department is our apprenticeship program. We generally typically hire graduate students, if possible, to do very high-level research work and survey work for us for relatively less money than we would pay to the planners. However, this would be the time to take a look and see if we could cut those. So we're cutting the two positions that would save us the two first levels. And then the transfer of one position to Transit and Parking Funds. This is the mobility planner position that was an hourly position, and last year, you actually authorized us to make it a full-time position, was coming out of the general fund. This proposal would then fund that position, which is filled, from Transit and Parking Funds, because that person is working on the mobility study and actually implementing your direction of that. The last item is increase in revenues. We think with a three-point-three percent increase in planning fees and introducing some new fees at a lower estimate, we could increase the funds by more than fifty thousand dollars, and that takes us to four-point-nine percent reduction.
Okay. Councilmember Nigari.
Now, we, this is the first department that has shown an increase in revenue, the revenue side. So are you allowed to do that?
We asked...
When we figure the 5%, or is that, does the 5% only the expenditure reduction?
Part of the revenue increase is charging council members for questions. Per question, actually, I might add, so...
I'm glad I didn't say anything.
Yeah. All right. Mr. Scarborough?
Well, in some cases, yes. I mean, obviously, they have been. I mean, in some cases, where departments have come up with novel ways that relate directly to their activities, we did allow it in the door. I think there also has frankly been a reluctance to look at further cuts in his own staffing just because of the importance of the level of planning that we've got in the department, too. So they came up with some other ways of trying to address the need.
Is that compatible with the...
Let me tell you, the other departments... His colleagues didn't beat him up.
Was there too much mass and density that one? I'll let you slide, but I just want to raise that.
Well, let me also say, say one more thing. If, I think our colleagues have been observing that over the last year, you have asked us to do a lot more staff-intensive planning process. We do a lot more hand-holding, and to meet the requirements that you have put in front of us in terms of the customer service that we need to provide to lead the applicants through our process. And let me also add that our comprehensive planning section is comparable in terms of the number of staff to Burbank and Pasadena, except we do everything in-house. We produce all of the plans in-house. In those cities, those people manage contracts and then hire consultants at anywhere between $150 to $300 per hour to produce those documents that we produce in-house. So we're already running a very lean department, highly staff-intensive. And I think our colleagues were kind enough to observe that.
I'd like to, guys, give a follow-up question. And that is, in light of the, you know, you talked about some of the extra work, staff-intensive work that planning has had to go through, and clearly, your department has been on the hot seat before council this past year, maybe going even back, and maybe on again. And as a general citywide question, I know in the music industry, unpaid interns are used extensively. On Capitol Hill in Washington, non-paid interns claw and fight for those type of positions. On a citywide basis, is that something that we want to explore in terms of providing some extra low-level clerical help with either high school grads or college grads? I see your grads are, were paid, the positions we eliminated. Is that something that we, as a city, have a policy on, bringing in unpaid interns to assist staffers in any form?
Well, the answer is it depends on what you're expecting of them. You can expect more of a paid intern. You expect them to come on board with a certain level of skills, sometimes even experience in other agencies, maybe in a non-paid intern position. So you expect production out of them. Unpaid interns, you're expecting they're coming on board really to gain experience from you. They can take as much supervision as the work is that they will produce, especially for what is a very short period of time. I think Hassan's interns are generally here throughout the year. They may change, but he has a position that's throughout the year, and they actually get into a mode of producing work. Other intern positions, they take supervision, and generally, it can be more energy than the production you receive.
Our interns require a lot of, a high level of skills. Usually, we try to go to USC and UCLA graduate schools and pick first-year graduate students because we ask them to do geographic information systems analysis, field surveys, photographic surveys, and then surveys of policy in other cities for comparative analyses. So that's a very high-level skilled type of internship that we have that could not be provided to volunteers, for example.
Okay. Councilmember Yusefian.
If you kept one of those positions, what would the cost be? The interns?
The interns, the costs are, one with, the $12,854, that's a graduate intern, for example.
Per year?
Per year, yes. And then the lower position, which is $10,877, that's an undergraduate intern that we can use in case processing, which is less skilled.
And that's, I think I'm interested in keeping at least one of those positions because they do a lot of the legwork that another planning associate would have to do for $90,000. And so you could get somebody to do this stuff for $12,000, that would be fabulous. And I understand the planning department, since I've been on this dais since 2001, has done a tremendous amount of work. We've been doing all kinds of stuff. So, and we always ask him, do this and do that, and provide us this survey, provide us that survey. And so that's, you know, what is required. I mean, we did downtown specific plan, we did a mobility plan...
Mobility plan, historic district gangs, zoning, all that stuff.
Design review, so...
Mobile.
I mean, I understand Dr. Phil can't do everything. Cycle analysis of council, I mean, you name it, the poor man does it.
Mr. Higginson, question. We talked about the cost of the interns. With this proposal that you've put forward, eliminating those two interns, who would pick up the workload if you go? How would you pick up?
Planning staff would. And that's a conversation we've actually had with our staff, and that, in, given the budget climate that we're in, we would have to pick that up. We've had that conversation with our staff. Mostly, it would be picked up by management-salaried staff as opposed to those who would be on overtime or won't be dropped.
And how many of those people, when you discussed with them, then asked you and turned if you could write them a nice letter of recommendation?
Won't be dropped.
Of these interns?
No.
Well...
You don't have to answer that, that was... The position that you've talked about, a filled position, the transfer of one position to transit and parking funds, how is that... I guess what I'm trying to say is, like my colleagues, we have been relying, I want to acknowledge that we have been relying very heavily on your department for variety, everything from public outreach to an overhaul of our design review process, trying to define what compatibility is and a lot of those issues, privacy issues. Everything from that to trying to facilitate increases in retail development in our city through sign programs and everything else, it all falls to your department. Not only that, trying to slowly convert our zoning language from the very sort of brittle kind of language that just reads no, 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 to something that actually breathes and is workable and can help us sort of expand in the future in a reasonable way and develop. That one position, is that going to seriously put a crimp in the boatload of new responsibilities? We've just laid on you last year. I'm asking you, but I'm getting a hand over here.
Just to clarify, again, maybe Mr. Higginson was, cut some slack, everybody on this one as well. This one doesn't eliminate the position.
Right.
It only shifts the responsibility for paying for it over to Steve Zern's Transit Fund, which, as you know, is already stressed, but we think this planner position is critically important. It will look just at transportation. So it is an appropriate charge to the Transportation Fund, but he doesn't have to forego the position, so he'd still have the position, and the work would still get done. It's just a matter of where it's being charged to.
Okay. Well, then, not to belabor it any further, then, with regard to the intern program, the dollar amounts I see there, I will file my comments under the same category that Mr. Yusefian did, under the category of penny-wise and pound-foolish, with the emphasis on pennies, because we spend more than that on a consultant to go out and do hiring and things like that. I mean, we, I would rather see it here, and for those small dollars, and keep our department moving forward as a full partner with our citizens. Are there any other comments on that, Mr.?
From a process standpoint, what might be useful is, we're keeping notes of all of these expressions of interest in keeping, in funding items that were on the elimination list. And after we get through all the departments and the balance of the presentation, which will probably consume all of our time, we'll come back at the next session with the whole list of all of the items that were pegged for reduction, that there's an expression of interest in keeping, and then the council can, at some point in time, give a specific direction on this.
All right, yes, Mr. Weaver.
Yeah, I was going to ask for my own use of it's very difficult, when we go through all the departments, to list them all down the table, starting with the highest dollar value first, like if it's Fire 1.9, on down saying department and what it is, because we're talking about $2 million that we can work with, programming capacity, without faking the bank, right, to balance the budget? So I could go down through, based on what I've heard, see which ones I would keep. Because, you know, when you get down to $1,500 in the, in the...
Treasurers.
Treasurers Department, weighing all those small ones against some of the big ones. One or two big ones, like the Fire and Police, are going to take the $2 million like that. So there's a balancing act. Is it hard to create that kind of a table?
Well, actually, if I, we can put it in a table, but you have it right here in the PowerPoints. And you, well, you don't have the whole table, but you have each individual department. You have all of the reductions, individual...
The answer is, you have to do some work.
No, we can put a table together for you, I'm just pointing out, we have all the information.
Well, I can do it too, but I'm talking from high to low, across departments.
Weaver needs an intern.
Across departments, on down.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
If you can't do it, let me know, and I'll do it myself.
And actually, we do have, Finance has prepared a table, I don't know if we distributed, did we distribute this table to everybody, Ron? Okay, we'll give you this one. I think this is close to what Mr. Weaver has asked for, which is by department, one table, all their individual cuts. You can just go down and check which ones...
Intermingled?
Yes, they're all on one table, and there's a running total.
Okay, just so it's intermingled. Department is mixed in with Fire and Police, everything there.
They're not intermingled, they are by department, but listed alphabetically by department.
Well, that's nobody wanted.
You want them intermingled.
Excuse me one second. What he wants is by numerical value, starting with highest and going to the lowest.
Okay.
So if that is useful, I'm sure that that is something we can...
It's easy. If not, just tell me, and I'll do it myself.
No, we can, just a different sort, we can do that.
Speaking of a different sort, we're switching from planning to police. Starts with a P, but it's a different sort of department.
Different animal here, and, actually, Ron, could we get that preface slide up? And what we'd like, by the way, good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of council. What we'd like to do is show you one slide initially, it kind of gives you a bird's-eye view of how our services are organized, and I think it's important to understand because it then helps you understand our rationale for approaching the 5% reduction. It's the one just preceding that, Bill. Slide number one. There we go. We'll get there momentarily. And what this does is, is this categorizes all the services and programs that we provide as a police agency, and you notice that as we move through this chart from left to right, it's organized on that left-hand side by what we call our essential core mission, our 911 emergency response. And these are all the units and functions that we really feel hold the line in our city, in terms of being able to respond to community-driven service demand. And this is what we feel is absolutely necessary. You know, this is our response times to emergency 911 calls. This is our ability to respond to incidents of crime with an investigative capacity, and really, the core and foundation of our mission. The center column represents all our proactive services. And this is where we do our proactive crime fighting and proactive problem solving. And you'll see units in there such as gangs and special enforcement detail, and our SROs on the high school and such, where we really can proactively make a difference. And here, these are the services that we feel go beyond just holding the line, but ensure that the city of Glendale remains one of the safest large cities, not only in California, but the entire country. It's because of these proactive enforcement capabilities. And finally, on the right side are our community-based preventative-type services, and certainly not to devalue any one of them in any way. However, these are more long-term and focused. They're preventative in strategy, and more importantly is, they give us more discretionary flexibility in terms of how we provide them, or if we provide them at all. So what you see there, highlighted in yellow, represents the service programs that would be eliminated by a 5% cut. Now, obviously, we're the largest general fund department. Our budget is about $56 million, so when we're looking at 5%, we're looking at a $2.8 million reduction. And that simply equates to personnel, services, and programs. There's no other way around it. So what you see there, just in a bird's-eye view, is the services that we'd address first. And the idea is, is that we start at the discretionary side, kind of like peeling an onion, with our core services in the center. And as we progress in the amount of services that we have to cut, we work backwards from right to left.
I'd like a copy of that.
You will get one, sir. And if we can go to the next one now, and I'll actually detail out what that 5% proposed reduction will address. And you see the services there, again, the majority of them are community-based, preventative, discretionary-type, with a little bit of an impact to our proactive crime fighting in the area of our cops unit. So starting at the top, the first is cops full service. When our cops unit is fully staffed, it has 12 sworn officers, and they are assigned geographically, where they can coalesce neighborhoods and get the community involved in long-term problem-solving, target-hardening, and changing the very conditions of a neighborhood through community policing tactics that prevent crime and public disorder long-term. So the initial reduction there would reduce four sworn officers from that unit, and as a result, eliminate that capability. The next one is our school resource off...
Let me just break in. So when you talk about eliminating cops full service, what you mean is, instead of 12, we would have eight?
That is correct, sir. And moving to the next is our school resource officers assigned to the middle schools. And this is kind of a dual-function role. We view it more preventative than enforcement-oriented. The reason being is, the SRO, middle school officers, are really involved in a very interpersonal mentorship role with the kids at the middle school level. It's a longstanding program. We've had them in the schools for the 30 years that I've been here. And the idea is, is that through that positive mentoring, that we can have a preventative effect long-term.
Ron, if I can interject here.
Yes, sir.
We've had SRO for a long time, but middle schools have been added since...
No, the middle schools were the original component. It was high schools that were added.
It was added, yeah. We didn't have them at both levels. And eliminating three positions, how many SROs do we have remaining?
Then we'll have remaining two SROs in each of the high schools for a total of six.
Total of six.
Yes.
So you don't have SROs on Clark?
No. We do not.
I might note that one of the SRO positions going into this year, the school district funded the majority of the cost...
That is correct.
...as part of their prospective budget reductions. They eliminated that funding. We, as a result, pulled that SRO position back into patrol. The district stopped funding, or stopped their contribution to the program going into this year. I don't know that their attitude has changed since the vision of the governor's budget, but we haven't, we haven't heard an interest in restoring that.
That's correct. The PAL program stands for Police Athletic League, and what that is, this is largely tied to after-school sports programs conducted by our middle school SROs, so they run an after-school basketball, flag football, our boxing program, our equestrian program and such. And the idea is, is to give our kids an alternative after-school to being on the streets, to give them constructive programs, again, in a positive mentorship role with the officers involved.
And this $55,000 would eliminate it totally, or just a reduction? And this $55,000 would eliminate it totally or just a reduction?
This program is, is run completely on overtime. So the, the SRO, the middle school SROs run it on, on an overtime basis. That represents the overtime cost. Eliminating that overtime cost would eliminate those programs. That's correct. The juvenile investigations, these are two investigators that are assigned solely to work juvenile crimes. And the idea is here that they, they work in very close partnership, not only with the SROs, but also with the school district specifically. And, and while they are actually conducting the investigations related to juvenile crime, one of their missions is for early intervention. And first-time offenders to, to work with the school district, the SROs and our, our family counseling services and, and such, and try to divert these one-time offenders out of the criminal justice system. And so for that reason, even though they are an investigator, a frontline investigator, much of what they do is, is preventative in, in nature. The alarms, this is a one civilian
Sir. Are you gonna eliminate, by eliminating those two positions, there will be no juvenile investigation?
No, they're, the, the juvenile crimes would go back to our general detectives who handle all the crimes citywide. And, and the thing that would be eliminated by that, we'd still obviously investigate juvenile crimes, but you wouldn't do it with a specified juvenile investigator that would be working on
But it will increase the load case
Absolutely, it will.
On the, the regular detective.
Yes, it will.
Okay.
And, and, and those officers are, are very busy. They do carry a pretty significant load.
How many cases you have on the juvenile?
I, I would say that they average about anywhere from 45 to 60 cases monthly per investigator. So they, they're, they're very busy. But again, much of their work is, is to try to divert kids out of the juvenile justice system.
This would mean a possible juvenile case is gonna stand in line with the other cases out there?
Precisely.
You know, the more serious, the faster the attention, the less serious, it's just gonna wait.
That's exactly right. The, the alarms function is a civilian person that administrates this program. The intent is cost recovery on our alarm responses, number one. So it, it does bring in a, a significant revenue base over the course of year. But, but secondarily, and, and very important to us, is, is the deterrence of false alarms through, through the levying of, of financial consequences. And what that does is, by, by being very proactive and on top of this, is that if we can eliminate the amount of false alarms our officers have to respond to, the more available time they're going to have to, to respond to true 911 emergencies. So, so that's a, a value there.
Ron, a question on this. I thought we had concluded that, that this would eliminate more revenue than the expenses.
And, and, and that will. There, there's a, a significant amount of revenue, probably upwards of $300,000 annually.
I thought we concluded for that reason, we couldn't eliminate this position.
Well, and, and we're just throwing it on, on there and what, I mean, we're, what, what we do with this particular function is, we'd still go after the cost recovery, but without having a, a person solely designated to that, the amount of proactive deterrence we can to prevent false alarms in, in the first place would suffer.
Okay, but the understanding was, we're not gonna forego $300,000 in revenue to save $58,000? And we'll still, we'll still raise the revenue?
That's, that's our anticipation. We just won't be able to do the, the proactive stuff we need to do and deter false alarms.
So who's gonna do the, who's gonna go after these people?
We will have to
How do we collect the $300?
Use personnel in, in our, in our, our business office, our administrative office and, and have people assume that responsibility. I'm not quite sure how we do that yet.
I think on this item, we need to put a big question mark by it
Yeah.
Because we need to see the plan to make sure we don't lose $300,000 in revenues in order to save $58,000.
I agree.
However, however, man, I, I mean, we can discuss this, but having a couple of uniformed officers going up to the door and knocking and asking for a bill may, may result in increased revenues as opposed to a nice form letter by a non-sworn officer. We'll talk about that.
And we'll look at alternative ways of, of, of pursuing that, that cost recovery.
Yeah.
Send the SWAT team. Take a big impression.
That might work.
Well, a great collection, mate, then.
Our cops television, this is a community outreach program. It's, it's, our, our various cops television programs, obviously, our most recent focus has been on traffic and pedestrian safety. It's our, it's our avenue to the, the community to get information out and educate the public and also to get feedback.
Costs $108,000?
Yeah, that's, that's the, we, we have a community service officer
Are they overtime?
No, that's, that's a significant portion of what, what that particular position does.
Oh, okay.
And, and then there's a lot of associated costs with, with producing those programs to include officer overtime, that, that, the officers that are actually involved in those productions. The, the following three are listed up there. There are Regional Crime Task Force, HIDA, CALMET, and TRAP. Those, those all focus on narcotic enforcement, methamphetamine enforcement, and stolen vehicle enforcement on a regional basis. There's not a, a, a cost figure listed up there. We have one officer assigned to each one of those task forces. And we do recoup the cost for those officers based on the, the operations, their, their seizures and, and such. However, a reduction of, of the amount of personnel that's indicated in this plan would, would require us to pull those three officers back out of those task forces for line-level assignment here within our local operation. Moving to the next, the security protection detail. This is the, actually, actually the staffing we provide at, at city council meetings to ensure security during, during those meetings. So the officers that you see here are, are assigned on an overtime basis. And, and that's the related cost figure annually.
We'll have Mr. Najarian bring his own gun
It might be a
From now on. Provide security for us.
Public safety
He's on your own, guys. I'm taking care of number one right here.
Well, thanks.
The Public Safety Academy, as Chief Scoggins mentioned, this is our, our partnership with Hoover High to give kids an option to, to pursue a public safety path in, in terms of their high, high school education. And it's an early recruitment opportunity for, for us to get kids focused in, into a potential law enforcement career and move them through the process where, where hopefully they'll, they'll ultimately end up in our candidate pool. The community room, there, there's a cost there for every time the community uses our, our room. We have to provide staff to, to set it up and, and such. But we've decided that even though that's one of our discretionary services, we will just, something we just simply have to continue to do. Explorers, Explorers are scouting program. They're scouting-age kids that are, are brought into a law enforcement-specific program and, and environment. And the $19,000 there represents the, the overtime for two officers to, to run that, that program. And again, the idea is, is this is the very first rung of the ladder in our long-term recruitment strategy, that we get kids involved in, in Explorers, that they move on to, to the, the Public Safety Academy in high school, perhaps get involved as, as cadets, and then ultimately into full-time positions within the department. The STAR program, Students Training as, as Role Models, this is the overtime for, for two officers, again, another overtime-supported program. But it's to take at-risk kids, specifically younger siblings with, with gang members involved in, in the nuclear family, and to try to get those kids into an alternative path where we can provide positive mentoring and, and support. And, and there's tremendous amount of, of success stories related to that. However, it's a very small program. Two officers on overtime and they address a small group of about maybe 20 kids annually. So a, a, a small effort, but with big dividends. The Citizens Police Academy, we just started one last week. 30 members of the community are, are attending. What we do is, we put them through a 16-week academy, one night a week. They come in and they receive instruction from our officers. They receive tours, they go on ride-alongs, they visit our firing range. They get to truly experience many of the things that our police officers are faced with in, in a modern, contemporary policing environment. And it, it's just a, a good opportunity to develop partnerships and, and educate key members of, of our community about law enforcement here, here in Glendale. We try to put one on every semester, so we, we typically run two annually. Our Community Family Counseling Center, this is comprised of, of counselors that are hired on an hourly basis. They provide counseling to students referred from the Glendale Unified School District, as well as from our own enforcement operations within, in the department. And again, the idea is, is, is early diversion, intervention, and, and hopefully getting kids steered in, in the right direction. Now, this program, it, it does receive a $10,000 grant from the county annually to help offset expenses. And also, the, there is a, a nominal contract with the school district that provides a per-session reimbursement of, of the counseling services. But it falls far short of the, of the total $90,000 budget, annual budget. And, and then finally, the, to meet the, the balance of the 2.8 million or, or 5% reduction, we simply have to go into the rest of our, our cops unit. And that would take the remaining eight sworn officers. These, this is our problem-oriented portion where these officers, when, when problems occur, regardless of what the nature of the problem is or the geographic location, they will go out and, and scan the environment, they'll, they'll analyze the problem, they'll, they'll develop a plan, and they'll call in other resources, both in the community and, and other city departments, and, and put together an effort to solve that problem long-term. So that's the, the total composition of, of our community policing unit. Now, that, that equates, gentlemen, to a total of 19 positions. 15 of those positions are sworn for our professional staff or, or non-sworn. And then six hourly positions as, as well, which represent our, our Community Family Currently, we have eight sworn vacancies that we're dealing with. So we have seven sworn, or pre-s sworn officers in the academy that, if implemented, we'd, we'd have to let go. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Councilmember Quintero.
The last line item, the cops problem-oriented, in other words, that's the cops program, basically.
In its entirety.
Okay. All right, well, I, no, I, I see an awful lot of things that I think are just way too important to, to eliminate, starting with, I can see the top item, instead of 12, to have eight cops. Somewhat comfortable with that. The middle schools, as a former middle school student, they needed an SRO when I was in middle school, actually. I think that would have been an excellent, excellent idea.
Things might be very good on this council, frankly.
Right. Things might have been sent in a different direction, anyway. But that one, that one, you know, is worth discussing, I guess. But I'm very much against eliminating PAL. I just think that's not a good idea. The, I'm also against eliminating the Explorers and the STAR program and the Community and Family Counseling. I mean, that's very important. I mean, these are basically referrals of, I've, you know, worked with that program in the past. They're basically referrals from, it's not even necessarily just students, but just a family, taking that whole approach to the family issues.
That's correct.
I know how positive that's been. And in fact, what I find interesting about that is that it's not always low-income families or students or potential, potential criminals that are, you know, working through these, through these sessions. And then overall, I just think the cops program is literally one of the best things that any city can do, in terms of having police officers in neighborhoods that are familiar with what's going on. It's the old concept of the cop on the beat. Not someone driving around in a car, but a police officer that's there looking at all of the issues and is quick to spot when something doesn't make sense. So overall, I think we, you know, those things that I mentioned, I'm absolutely not interested in cutting. There are other things, whether it's a cops TV program or moving the juvenile investigations to Detective Bureau in general. But anyway, that's, oh, and one more question. How about overtime? What was the overtime at the PD last year? Do you know?
Yes. Last year, our overtime was about 2.5 million. And that represented about, well, in excess of a $400,000 reduction. And so at this stage, our overtime, we, we, in analyzing it, about 68% of it is what we call non-discretionary. That means it's related to court cases
Right.
And it's related to providing 911 mandatory staffing levels. And so it leaves us very, a very small percentage that we can look at in, in terms of, of cutting back. But even when we do that, then we affect our proactive crime fighting. You know, the, the Sandoval murder manhunt was, was heavy overtime involvement. Our two recent major officer-involved shootings, heavy overtime involvement. The opening of the Americana brand, heavy overtime involvement. So those are the proactive things that we have a very small portion of our overtime available to use for.
The overtime at the Americana, is that gonna be reimbursed?
That's correct.
Yes. In terms of the matrix, do you, are you able to track on this overtime, the overtime hours and monies that are coming from, say, sergeant and below, lieutenant, et cetera?
Yes, absolutely.
You're able to?
And, and obviously, the, the lion's share of our overtime is, is line-level staffing. The vast majority of it is related to mandatory staffing levels or beyond tour, tour type of calls for service.
Mr. Weaver.
If you just look at saving six firefighters and keeping the cops program, we've taken care of the $2 million. If we eliminate every single other thing we've talked about today. So, if we're being realistic and we start to go down that road, how do we balance? Are we talking now about understanding the economy is tight and it will turn around sometime in the future, two, three years, whatever? Do we have discretion to go into our reserves to be very selective and get what we need to keep certain services? For instance, I'm very proactive on juvenile interdiction, PAL, whatever. You hear all the time about, our kids are our future. And if we don't keep effort into heading them down the right road with certain programs, where are we? So do we have the ability to go into the reserves if we desperately need to, to keep certain things afloat? Is that possible?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Weaver
Yes, City Manager.
The answer is yes. You do. But obviously, the, the more you do that, the deeper the hole it is that you dig for yourselves.
It's sort of like standing in a bucket, trying to raise yourself up by pulling on the handle.
I know, but I don't see the budget that we're going through now being a crisis for the next five, 10 years.
That's true.
We're into what you call a recessionary period. We know that the foreclosure and homes, everything is gonna stop eventually and it's gonna turn. So we're not gonna be in these dark consequences in the future. If we feel it's very necessary to maintain things like the firefighters and the cops program and other certain ones in different departments, and there haven't been that many today. If we feel that, no, it's gonna cost us another $500,000 to a million, do we dip in the reserve with the knowledge it's a short-term investment for a year or two to keep certain critical services going? That's, I'm just throwing it out to think about. Thank you.
Okay, before we go forward, I just wanna let all of the, let all the stations know along the network that we were going to run long. I know Mr. Weaver has to go, but we're gonna run long, probably.
I want to hear Steve's.
Okay. I want us to at least go until noon if we need to, but we will cut it off at that time. Mr. Najarian.
I may have to leave slightly early, Mr. Mayor, but I guess this raises a question. I mean, the protection of the city council and the people attending council meetings are not a core, we don't consider that a core service of the police department.
But it's not a comment on the importance or value of the service. It's a comment on the discretionary flexibility we have. Of course, we view all you as very high priority.
I see that as a, all kidding aside, I do see that as a rather critical element. We've got folks who come in and they hate each other, and they hate the council, and they hate staff, and there's a lot of potential for violence, I think, and I think the presence of an officer does quell that.
And we certainly do not dispute the value or importance, but what we're saying is that we don't, we have to respond to 911 emergency calls. We don't have discretion there. We have to respond. However, these programs, we have discretion. We can decide to do them or not to do them, setting value and political priority aside and just looking at services that, number one, are not 911 essential, and that we have discretion, that we have some decision-making ability if we want to provide them and to what level. And that's all we're offering you, and we're willing to take your direction. But we just wanted to bring to you all the services that we have discretion with.
Mr. City Manager.
Let me just point out the practical reality of this, and I think we commented on it briefly at the executive meetings where we put these plans together. This means either Assistant Chief Tappapa, or Chief Adams, or some other commander is going to be spending their time at council meetings, frankly, because we're not going to do without security or sergeant-at-arms at a meeting. I can't dispute the police department's position that if we make cuts, 9/11 calls come first, but there was a view by some that you offer up the popular programs, knowing that they won't get cut. I raised that specific issue with the PD, however, and can't dispute their logic in saying, "No, we should maintain our core services." So for that reason, my view is, we won't do without security here. If the department says we won't assign an officer, then I guess it's going to be a manager who's going to sit here protecting the city council and serving sergeant-at-arms at a meeting.
That may not make you feel very comfortable.
Does your mark?
Depends on which one.
You better be nice to him.
I have to increase my bullet allotment from one to two.
All right. Or maybe five.
Maybe five.
Thank you, Mr. Five. And, all right. Yes, Mr. Uzay.
Couple of short comments. By the way, I do agree with our mayor, that was a good analogy of a bucket and standing in it and trying to pull yourself up, and I think that I don't want to get myself in that position. Before I try to go into anything as far as reserves or anything else is concerned, I think this is a first go-around. I think we put down each council member's concerns, then we come back, look at that list and see, we fine-tune it again, we've done this, this is not the first time we've done this. And then we will decide which revenue, which avenue we're going to choose. I will tell you for myself, I have issue eliminating the cops problem-oriented program completely. I think cops program is extremely important. It works fine, and I don't want to eliminate that. The juvenile investigation, I think that's also very important, because if you just throw it in, now two different groups get hurt, the regular people who don't get their investigations done on time, and the juveniles don't get theirs done. So both groups suffer, so I have an issue with that. One thing I would like to see, as you come back to this, the Explorer program, what I'm very supportive, I understand what the issue is with Explorer program, is to bring forward future police officers. I'd like to see analysis of the last 10 years we have done, how many of those kids actually have turned out to be police officers for City of Glendale? If there is something to that, then let's keep it. If there isn't, and they just do something, and then later on become accountants and lawyers or something else, then maybe that's something that I can look at, but I like to see that statistic before I make decisions. I have no problem with elimination of the cops TV. I have an issue with the alarm, false alarm billing. I think I want to make sure that we don't lose the $300,000. SRO in the middle school, I like to see some statistics before I am ready to go in that direction. And that's it.
Okay. I'm going to reserve my comments, most of them have been made by other council members with regard to the cops program and some of the Explorers and PAL program and so on and so forth, but we will come back to that. If there are other questions, then we'll move on. And I thank you. Mr. Zern.
Oh, good. Here comes public works. Make it good, they've been waiting for you all day long.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The Public Works Department represents the third-largest department after Public Safety in the General Fund, approximately 20, just under $25 million. As has been mentioned by several others today, we rely heavily on our staffing and human resources, so that's primarily where the reductions come here, of a combination of reduction of, or elimination of vacant positions, transferring some positions to other funds, elimination of hourly wages, and then some MNO costs for outside contractual services that we're proposing to reduce. You'll see the first, first three positions here, Assistant City Engineer, Senior Survey Tech and Engineering Project Specialist, all come from the, our engineering division. I may be a little more pessimistic than others, but I anticipated that this wasn't going to be a real good economic year, so we started some time ago with self-imposed hiring freezes and restructuring of certain aspects of our department. Engineering was one, where we had an opportunity where most of the top-level managers all left at one time. So it gave us the opportunity to come back with new management, new ideas, and different positions on how we should structure the division. Assistant City Engineer, what we'll continue to have is two very strong, actually four, I should say, but we'll have senior civil engineers in our special projects in our design section, we will have a senior executive analyst who runs inspection and right-of-way management, and then we have our survey supervisor, our licensed surveyor. That's the second position you see there, or a position in survey, which is a senior survey technician position. This is primarily, gives us the ability to reduce this based on the use of technology. Our new supervisor is very, very up to speed on technology and the ability to go down to two-man crews by utilizing electronic and computerized equipment. He's very proficient in that, and we've held this position vacant for quite some time as we've added the equipment and proven that it works. Engineering Project Specialists, quite frankly, while we have increased some of our projects, generally speaking, we're holding the line, we haven't increased our level of project management to the point that we can employ all of the project teams that we'd originally set out to. If that were to ever change, because it's a CIP-based situation, we could add back as needed, but for the time being, the way we've designed our project teams, where they're actually managing a project from inception to completion, it's worked very well, efficiencies have been excellent. And I have to point out, this is just a lot of great work on the part of the engineering division and the managers, in increasing efficiency. We are pushing out more projects than ever in the city. We are very rarely lagging, in other words, we're very rarely holding projects over from one year to the next. Some of you who've been here for a while can remember the days when we'd come to you with a, you know, a 1996, '97 resurfacing project, and it was 2002. So we obviously fell behind a little bit, so you don't see that anymore. We are pushing the projects out year after year. The next two positions, and I want to point out, we had a bit of a change, we had one change on the street maintenance worker position. We substituted a crew supervisor position, street crew supervisor position in our asphalt operation. We're going to propose going with just one street crew supervisor in that operation. We've been operating that way for probably the last six months or so. I think it works, it puts a greater burden on the supervisor himself and on the equipment operator twos to help manage some of the workload, but the staff has done a very good job to this point. The maintenance worker position's in the concrete operation, this is an entry-level position. What we'll simply have to do is more than likely rotate our maintenance workers where we need them. We have maintenance workers in asphalt maintenance, we have them in concrete maintenance, we have them in tree maintenance. So where we might need additional help, we'll rotate off and almost in an essence, create a pool of maintenance workers. The next two are equipment mechanics or our fleet maintenance personnel. We're proposing to shift two of those positions, one to the refuse fund, the other to the sewer fund. I would say that probably, even including the other departments that we work for, 65% of our work is refuse and sewer. Easy. That's street sweepers, refuse trucks, and very detailed, high-tech sewer equipment that we're using. Next is to eliminate essentially all hourly wages in the department. This is across the board from a general fund perspective. We've greatly reduced the number of hourly workers we've used over the last two years. We'll simply have to make do. We'll use hourly workers sparingly, we'll use them to fill vacancies, and we'll use the vacant positions' salary savings during the period to fund it, and then we'll, once we fill that position, the hourly worker would then be removed. The last two, one is to reduce contractual services for plan check. We had put a substantial amount of money in this particular account and used outside firms to help us get our backlog down, also help us during what was really a very, very busy peak period with the Americana, with Embassy Suites, some of these others. In order for us to keep our head above water and keep our turnaround time for everybody else at a decent, you know, 30 to 35 days, we instituted the, or we employed a greater level of contractual services. Really, you know, candidly speaking before you, it's much, much more efficient for us to use in-house services than outside contractual plan check services. It's just, a lot of times, we have to actually check what they did to make sure that the proper Glendale codes are applied. It did help us, don't get me wrong, good firms, it did help us tremendously to get our backlog down, but it really was what we had, what would happen here is we fell behind on our staffing, and after over two years and two completely different recruitments, we were able to attract two plan checkers. That's it, two. That was all the list was, actually. So with those two, with one, hopefully, that we will secure in the next month or so, that'll greatly help us to stay current with what we have in our plan check. Finally, we have some reduction in our contractual services for sidewalks. We're betting on, although concrete continued to go up, it seemed to flatten a bit for us, and I think with the fact that there's a lot of demand, or there's less work than there is, people willing to do work, our prices have come way down on our contracts, so we're betting that we'll be able to maintain the level of service we have and still have the ability to reduce the budget a bit here.
Okay. Let's go to some questions. Can you say? No?
Good job, Steve.
Mr. Quintero.
Yeah. Good job, Mr. Zern.
Proactive.
Let's take the remaining time to get to the citywide reduction strategy and the general fund transfers.
I'm going to be mayor, it won't take us long to get through, maybe just touch very quickly to tell you what you have in the balance of this packet, so when you go back to your offices and review it, you'll know what's there. The citywide reductions, one is an initiative, we call it, a goal to reduce within those facilities supported by the general fund, a reduction in utility costs of 10%. I think that's a goal we should be attempting to accomplish regardless of the budget situation. We spend about $3.25 million on things like electricity, water, heating, AC, those kinds of things. I think we can accomplish a 10% reduction, if not more, our goal will be to do more. I think this is a fairly conservative estimate of what we can do. These next two are more in the sense of sending a message. With this level of budget reduction, the executives, we believe, should be the first ones to step up and shoulder at least some of that burden. We had built into the budget a increase in salaries commensurate with an anticipated COLA, which would apply to our other contracts as well as GMA. This foregoes that for the executives, the roughly 17 or 18 people that make up the executive team. The next item was mentioned earlier, just seemed that at a time that we're making these kinds of reductions, reducing positions, some of which have people in them, this will not be an easy year. It's difficult to say that we should continue to spend in the general fund $22,000 and another $18,000 or so outside the general fund for the annual employee holiday party. It is a great morale booster, but it just seems it sends the wrong message when we're making such severe cuts in other areas. So these were three overall citywide reductions that we noted, total of $432,000. The next set is a fairly significant strategy for balancing, and that has to do with various transfers in and out of the general fund. Let me touch on the first two, and then I'll turn to Ron or Bill to touch on the balance of them. This first one is to index the GWP electric transfer and water transfer. The council actually did approve indexing the transfer. By that, I mean each year, regardless of the budget situation, not increasing the transfer any greater than the CPI index. We did that because the electric and water transfer is such a significant component of resources for the general fund. To have it frozen meant that we had $18 million or $20 million in our general fund not growing with inflation. But more than five years ago, we were looking at the GWP transfer more as a balancing tool. So if we were off by 15 million, 18 million, 20 million, it was fairly easy to turn to that transfer and just increase it, because we're well below the charter requirement. However, with the change in the cost of natural gas, other impositions on electric and water utilities due to the supply and demand, conservation efforts, there's a lot more pressure on our rates than there was 10 years ago. As a result, we're hearing more and more pressure on that transfer and what that means in our rates. So we had first devised this budget with an objective of not indexing the transfer. In other words, keeping the transfer from water and electric at a flat nominal dollar amount. As we went through the effort to close the gap, one of the items we said we needed to reconsider was whether or not that was a goal we could achieve this year. This item has us index the transfer but not cap the transfer. So this would apply the standard 4%, I think, Bill, 4% to last year's transfer, and essentially continue the policy of indexing it, but not implement a policy of capping it. And that results in about $800,000 improvement in the general fund picture. That will continue to put pressure on the electric rates from the transfer, but not any greater than the cost of living index is. With that, let me turn to Bill or Ron for the balance of these.
Let's also try to be economical of both word and phrase and sentence and paragraph and, so we can wrap this, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The remaining transfers in come from the other enterprise funds that we have, Safer Recreation. We currently have, our sewer fund is indexed, but it's not at the 4% level, so this brings it up to the 4%, so additional $25,000. We also are looking at the refuse and hazmat, beginning transfers there of $500,000 and $100,000, so for a total of hair over $1,505,000 in transfers in or additional revenues to the general fund. Decreases to transfers out, we have about $8 million in transfers out of the general fund each year that go to our CIP, our capital improvement program, or to a variety of what we call internal service funds, to set aside money for equipment replacement or software replacement, or for wireless communications, as you heard Scott Harmon from Information Services mention previously. So here's the reductions in transfers out of the general fund for next year to the $206,500. So the transfer to the CIP goes from 1.5 million down to 1.3, same as 200. Transferred application software eliminates the transfer for next year, so $0. The, that fund has almost $1 million in there, so they can handle having a $0 transfer for one year, then it goes back up to the $200,000. Transfer to financial system, this is in the PeopleSoft of $100,000, as you already heard, we did some other reductions in that fund already. And then transfer to Police CAD of $190,000. This is to set aside money, this is a couple-million-dollar project, and it was brought onboard right before the police entered their new building, so we are setting aside $190,000. So we are setting aside $190,000 every year for that eventual replacement. So if we don't do this for a year or two, we'll just have to come up with a little bit extra at the end when we actually build the new CAD RMS. CAD stands for Computerated Dispatch Records Management System. So with that, we have changes of $2.167 million. I can move on. This is a recap again. We started off with this summary, saying how we're going to hopefully do a number of different strategies and end up with a program in capacity of 2 million. And we went through all of this detail. And for the next two slides, we're going to hit the bottom two rows on this slide, which is possible additional revenues and then additional expense considerations. Next slide. We won't go through each one of these line-ons because of the short timeframe, but these are other possible additional revenue items that we have been discussing at the executive team level that we are looking at. Each one of these would require some form of council action, either an increase in fee, which would be a resolution, or establishment of a new fee, which would, you know, entail a whole report and discussion with council and the need for the new fee and so forth. And then the next slide shows our...
Before you go on, I think on these, we would say that we're fairly optimistic that these could be accomplished. There's some questions, for example, from a legal standpoint of just exactly how would you structure the arrestee booking fee? But we think for the most part, these probably have a high potential of being able to be accomplished, but we haven't been so confident as to place them in the budget at this point.
Mr. Weaver. When are we going to get the red light cameras in? I understand they're a good revenue generator.
Actually, they're, some are in.
Some are working. All right. Let's not get sidetracked. I'm ahead of this time. Let's finish.
Good generator, just wondering if that's some new revenues.
These are some other expense considerations. We, as council, maybe where we are in the middle of some huge expense increases. One is fuel. We're all paying at the pump. We have now crossed $4 a gallon. And your guess is as good as mine as to where that will stop. And same way with insurance and surety bonds. And then some other items which council has already mentioned. For example, the first item, Restore Code Enforcement Inspectors and Customer Service Rep, $270,000, where we've already discussed these. So these are still out there. We are still looking at these expenses that somehow need to be addressed because they are increases to our cost, telephone cost and so forth. So we are looking at these. These would be adds to the expenses. And then the last bullet point on here, we are still reviewing our list of vacant positions. You've heard a number of proposed reductions, be it filled or vacant. Currently, there's about 112 or 113 vacancies in the general fund alone, but we are still looking at the vacant positions overall as well.
Mr. Ussay.
Ron, could I get a list of those vacant positions? I think maybe we all need to get, I just want the vacant position. I don't want names. Well, they're vacant.
There's no names. Right. You got it. No problem.
Actually, let's just make sure that all the council members get a copy.
We will do that, yes.
Thank you.
The last item I'll touch on is just our schedule.
Let's skip that page.
Go one more. So later today, you will look at the Glendale redevelopment agency budget. Next week, we will come back with more solutions and a different sort per Councilman Weaver's request and also look at the community development and housing budget on June 3rd and then so forth for final budget adoption on the 24th. We have the public hearing next on June 10th and in the evening. And that's all been noticed and you did that action last week.
I'd like, Mr. City Manager, to also note, because we have this sort of special meeting this afternoon in the 2:30 time slot with a number of other meetings, joint meetings and JRA and housing, I'd also like to let everyone know, I'd like to take that right at 2:30. So if we can let some of our two housing authority members know who are not members of the council so that they're not cooling their heels during that time. Thank you. Thank you all. What you've done for us today is very, very helpful. Schools has been in session all morning and we thank you. And thank you, Ron, and thank you, Mr. Fox.
Do we need adjournment?
Second.
Do we have a motion? End of second.
Moving forward.
We adjourn. Thank you.